Facilities that are experiencing multiple clusters of disease resulting from suspected school-based transmission.
I'm just thinking it's your motion, but I'm going to suggest that the last one is, are you explicitly delegating to the administration to make that determination? If in fact there were significant transmission in a given school.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we're adding this to the agenda specifically.
So one thing I do have a question about, that's not, I mean, the proposal is fine, but the word quarantine doesn't belong in there because you're not quarantining anybody. You're just asking them to wear masks. And you can't always distance in our secondary schools. I'm not sure how we would actually do that. But that's, I guess, a discussion point. But the word quarantine, I default to.
Yeah, I guess you would put that.
You're really just saying you're getting rid of quarantine. You're really just saying you're getting rid of quarantine except for close contact or ongoing. That's really what you're doing. You mean, you can call it quarantine?
You can call it what you want, again.
Right, but you're calling it something else, isn't it?
This is not a new concept?
No, it's not, but if they don't call it quarantine.
They're around now, but they call it modified quarantine.
They don't call it modified quarantine because it's not quarantine. You're just basically saying you can go to school, which is fine. But it's really just getting rid of our quarantine is what you're saying.
Yeah. No, I don't think they're saying get rid of quarantine because there are students who will be.
Except in the situation of close contact. Masking isn't quarantine. It's a mitigation measure that's different. How is wearing a mask quarantine?
So we are.
Quarantine means you separate from others. So six feet is not enough, right? But that's not what quarantine is still, that's distancing. I just, language wise.
Again, what we're, we are.
Let's call it what it is.
We're adjusting. No, it's called modified quarantine. This is what Baker County had this, other bus schools. They think you have that.
I'm not saying they don't have it. I think that terminology is incorrect. Because I think guarantee to know when they're signing up.
I'm defining our modified quarantine policy. And it's, it'll be up for debate.
Just a question for the listener.
Yeah, hold on a second. Go ahead. People already have a question. Okay. Okay, any other discussion points with regard to masking or quarantine at this time? Because I'd like to move to public comment. We've set the agenda.
Could we, could we have that statement read again once? It's, I, just for the sake of the public who is commenting and also for myself, because I'm going to need to hear that once or twice more before. It would be helpful if it were in front of me, but I understand it's probably not an option right now.
Could you email it to us, Dr. Whiteout possibly? Thank you. I'd be honored.
But also, could we, in some capacity, either read it again or have it available to the community? I don't know if we can attach it somehow so folks can pull it up on their smart devices right now? Is there a way that we can email it and attach that proposal? Because I'm sure folks out there have their phones and they can look it up. It'd be helpful for everyone. Good.
And you also have a question for the listener. I don't know, I mean, in this situation, you know, for an agenda amendment scenario, do, can we have a counterproposal in that, you know, you have testing be required as a portion of it? Or would that be something we amend it as we discuss during courses and meetings?
That's, we've been, as we discussed during courses, we, right now, we're just setting the agenda and agree to do that. Okay, we can have more discussion after we listen to the public comment.
But someone else could also offer something for the agenda as we're setting it right now. You could also amend the language right now before we set up the agenda.
With a majority.
Yeah, 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 exactly, yes. But there's no need to, yeah. So the public doesn't have to comment multiple times if we set the language now.
For purposes of public comment, I am comfortable that everybody in the public is aware of what's being considered. Yeah, so I think everybody will know on what they should be commenting. And then if a motion is made, you know, we can address any questions and then let's.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
If I could just add a thought. Masking optional. I had a couple agendas, ideas out there. We must mask on school buses and transportation. And so, Mrs. King, I, I had a motion. I had a motion that raised up a long line. Mask, consider a motion to make masks optional for all students, employees, and visitors in the country. Unless mandated by state, federal, or other legal authorities, you can allow us to mainly mask on buses and transportations.
Correct. Starting tomorrow at the end of day. Could you say that again? I didn't catch that. Starting tomorrow at the end of the day.
After student dismissal?
Correct.
Dr. Mann, would you look at that again, please?
Yeah. Is it not my recommendation, but tomorrow is a mask optional. He would say that, consider a motion making masks optional for all students, employees, and visitors within Southern High School District buildings unless mandated by state, federal, or other legal authorities.
Okay. Any further comments before we move to approve the agenda? Would I have a motion?
Have a comment. Any notes or court discussing or having an agenda on mask and masking tonight? I believe that has been addressed adequately on the November 22th board event meeting, where the date for that was given of January 11th. The reasoning behind that, as I recall, mainly dealt with the ability of five and 11-year-olds to complete their vaccination regimen, as well as, you know, concern about spikes that are often seen in the history of the pandemic following a period of a holiday that involved travel and folks getting together. So regardless of how I feel about the mask issue, I don't think it's appropriate for the board, and I don't think it's fair to, I think, on this issue, for me, you have to have a very compelling reason to change that date. Because people have relied on that date in making decisions about vaccination schedules, whether vaccinated, not vaccinated. And I think to change that date over five or six school days that would be affected by it does not, you know, outweigh the impact that would have on people who have maybe disagreed quite vehemently with the mask decision in general and maybe wrapped their mind around the January 11th date, but to change it at this point, I don't think it's fair or appropriate. And it's a tough decision that was already made, and I don't think it's helpful to the community to revisit it tonight, a few days before Christmas, when it does not impact more than a week's time of actual class. So for me, I would not want to address the masking decision on the agenda tonight. Quarantine issue, I have heard a lot of feedback from folks about that. I really would like to be educated better about it. I think it is worthy of discussion. I don't know that I would be prepared tonight to vote on, on language about that. I'd have to, I'm sure it's not our authority to change that language, where that language has been used, how the outcomes are there, another different things. I certainly think it's an issue that needs to be addressed relatively quickly because I do think it's impacting families, and it does seem to me that it's something that we should think about and certainly discuss. So I'm comfortable with at least certainly having that discussion, beginning our education about that with the mind of either perhaps not voting tonight, but maybe at the January 10th meeting, once we add language and other thoughts. So I certainly endorse the idea of quarantine to the extent that people call it a special meeting for that purpose. I think it's appropriate and a good thing, a good use of our time. But on the issue of masks, I don't think we have a compelling reason to change the guidance that was voted on on November 22nd. And I would object to discussing it this evening.
So the board president is going to solicit a motion to approve the agenda. As of right now, that agenda would include the masking. So if anyone wants to, doesn't want to, can have that as part of the agenda, but both know on this first motion. Right, that makes sense. Thank you. So I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Can we have discussion first?
I'm sorry for that discussion. Any more discussion?
Well, that was discussion.
Right, can I, I just had a question. Could Mr. Combs please, I just, could you please state what we are voting on at this time again?
So at the moment, you have a printed out agenda. And as a result of the discussion, the motion is all of those items on that printed agenda would be approved.
And your comment was about Mr. Demick specifically. Could you state that?
Yes, anyone who did not want one or more of those items on the agenda would be both know on this motion to approve. And then we'd have to change the agenda and make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Your call.
Sure. The secretary.
Do you want to call?
No.
I agree.
No. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
That motion carries to approve the agenda. So right now, we're going to take a short break. Jennifer will go.
How about now? You are. Hi, I'm Stephen. Tonight, I'm part of the Masked and Quarantined District. I don't believe it just because if you have to test something, you may have to as well. I believe it has to be the right decision at the right time, true vetted education. So I am speaking to you as a mom of three in the district and a primary critical care doctor who actually works in a intensive care unit to give her critically obtuse. So for anyone not in the hospital on the frontline, I realize you may not really embrace or understand what healthcare workers endure over the past two years. And until you really understand and know something needs the hospital, you can't comprehend the current desperate state of years that we're in. E Rs are really backed up, and when people sit there for prolonged periods of time. So my husband tells me, you want to explain something, do sports. All I know is soccer. So my kids play soccer during a tournament, they can play three games in a day. They're kind of exhausted afterward, but in the hospital, it's like we can play five games a day, twenty times, every single day. So it's not fun like soccer. We're not winning tournaments, or everyone is gone, or we are in a smaller scale. So having kids on masks to me, it's like they must play more than five games a day, and we're already past our reserves in segment. So if you imagine asking the kids to do that, that's a lot. That's much to do that, which is a lot. People are quitting, tired, we're trying more, less staff, and it's a strain. It may not affect you now, but you need hospital care for your heart attack or pneumonia, it might be, you might need it in the future. So I'm saying if you unmask your children at the beginning of winter, not only will we see COVID spread further in the community, we will see other typical winter viruses and bacteria, including influenza, R S V, and strep. We've seen that before, now that it's big of a deal, but we're at a high or increasing COVID case rate at this point. It's the earliest we've seen COVID cases start in the past 10 years, and our healthcare systems are failing. So I don't expect to change anybody's mind who's listening, watching here with this now, but in conclusion, I need to speak up for myself, for my healthcare worker colleague, whom we will be directly affected by this. I inform you all of the consequences of making a decision on unmasking and what it will do to us in the healthcare system. Have this community make medical decisions based on popular vote is not how we should be looking at this policy. We have two networks backing us for a reason in this area, and we're lucky to have them. There's a time to discuss unmasking. I'm completely agree with that, but in the midst of rising COVID cases, the implication to devastate our healthcare system and affect our family members, it's not tonight. I implore you to all be reasonable, to be thoughtful, thinking of us, the community, and healthcare workers when you make your decision. Thank you.
Ryan? Ryan Sebik?
Thank you for the opportunity to participate. I fully understand how this happens after two years I've been. I'm a father of a child in this school district, and I'm also a volunteer in the partnership and associate chief. I've been on the front lines from this, on this, from the beginning. I didn't care opposed to thousands of hospital patients at this point, but seeing hundreds die. And I told sons and daughters their father or mother's life. I told fathers and mothers that their son or daughter has died. I told new father that his wife, mother, and newborn baby will not be around to see who won. I'm tired and I'm sad. I understand that people do not want their kids to wear masks. I don't want them to have to. But this is not just about kids, this is about our community. This is about our health system, being able to take care of patients that need us, not just for COVID, but for heart attacks, for strokes, for pneumonia, and all their other chronic conditions. We're barely a norm as a standard. And now we enter the holidays with a new variant that we still don't know yet the implications If you unmask our children, you risk crippling our health networks to the point of not being able to care for all those who need us. Worse yet, making us make decisions about who gets life-saving care and who doesn't. I ask you tonight, why now? Why not allow us to get some degree of stability before we change dates? Why not band together to help us through this winter? Both health networks have supported you in this community relentlessly through all of this, to the detriment of our own mental and physical well-being. The time has come for you now to support us.
Your partner, Pidaleen?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stovall Pataliama, cardiologist at the St. Luke's Network. Congratulations to the new board members, and thanks for what you do. I hope there's no doubt among any of us that COVID is real, that COVID has taken our lives. Numbers are high right now, transmission rates are high, transmission is in red in Lehigh County. Deaths are up 26% in the last one week. And Britain, which has only been a few weeks ahead of us with COVID, is seeing its highest positivity rate now. I hope there's also no doubt that masks reduce transmission. I hope we all agree that it's more than just our children, it's more than just us, because we, some of us have children younger than five who can't get vaccinations right now, probably not for a few months. So because our parents and grandparents who live around us want a much higher risk of dying if they get COVID. And don't forget that we also have a large community that is also affected by what we do here. I think your concerns about in-person learning and your concerns about mental health are absolutely correct, but I think that all the more we should be more careful about what we do here. With masks and quarantine and following CDC guidelines, evidence-based guidelines down, that's probably what we should do. I think someone brought up the American Association of Pediatrics here earlier, and the American Association of Pediatrics recommends that all students older than two and all school staff wear this mask at school regardless of vaccination status. Someone also brought up the not delegating school districts policy that was amended, and this is what it says, it requires masking for all persons indoors in delegating counties at the highest or substantial rate of COVID transmission, even if the state's mandate is lifted. This applies to even vaccinated persons. Masking would be optional for students and staff if the county is at a low risk of transmission, which is currently not the case here. While we might agree or not agree with the allegations, allegations decision, we are not at a low risk of transmission right now, we're at high, so I don't see that being an applies for us. Thank you.
Martin Nats, would you follow him?
I'm Martin Moxamara. I'm a chief cardiologist for the Geisinger Health System, and I have my third child who's about to see the earth. For thank you for everything you guys are doing, but I just wanted to make a couple, a couple comments. First one with regard to modified quarantine, which the punchline is I actually support. At Geisinger, very early on, we recognized that traditional quarantine was going to kill our staff and make it unable for us to effectively take care of patients. Very early on, even pre-vaccination, we essentially instituted a modified quarantine. Staff and providers who were exposed were allowed to stay at work and get tested and would only be sent home for true isolation if they turned positive or had symptoms. That was, the caveats that were too, one is that they obviously had to mask throughout that modified quarantine. But the other important caveat is realized very, realized very early on was that just as Dr. Man said, the transmission rate, the rate of positivity was extremely low. Dr. Mann mentioned he had supplied data to that effect. But you mentioned data that when those children go home, the positivity rate amongst siblings is high. Why is that? Obviously, because they're going home and not masked. So I support the idea of modified quarantine with an important caveat, they have to be masked at the time of exposure for that to be effective. Why can't we do that at Geisinger, we enjoy wearing these, we make sense? Is because we want to keep our employees at work, keep the machine going. Same with the schools, we just want to keep our kids in school. And I can't imagine why we wouldn't do anything different, because we all want to reach that goal, to keep our kids in school, whether they're exposed or whether they haven't. The second issue, and this is a more personal one, and I don't want to come off as anyone to do, but a couple meetings ago, there was a very spirited conversation about masks and a lot of discussion about the ineffectiveness of masks. And I was a little bit horrified to hear even folks in my specialty claim that the literature in general, and some of the random hospital trials, D A M S, for instance, in specific, didn't support immunity masks, it supported the concept that masks don't work. And that is a horrible misrepresentation of literature. Masks do work, they're not an antidote, they're not a cure-all, but they do work. Look, I'm not an expert on child development, I'm not an expert on zits, I'm not, I'm not an expert on public health, but I do understand research, and I do understand that the literature supports the mask work. If you want to vote down masks, and you want to vote it down because of the government intrusion, you don't want your kids to have zits, I disagree with that, but I respect it. I'm not an expert on any of those. But if you're voting it down with some preconceived notion that masks won't work, please don't admit it, because that is close to the end. Thank you.
Good evening. I speak tonight to urge this board to end mandatory masking immediately. There is no longer any statewide mandate, nor has the Commonwealth sought to implement a new emergency mandate, which should be telling. At least 10 school districts around us have already moved to mask optional. We have no good evidence that masking has helped us at all in Southern Lehigh, certainly not just compelled with masking. Simple cloth masks, identified more by the majority of our teachers and teachers, are simply not effective in stopping the spread of COVID generally, let alone behind the transmissive Omicron variant, particularly when masks are routinely worn improperly and inconsistently. Even CNN now is saying that cloth masks are no, are just facial decoration. I went to the girls' basketball game here last night. A third of the audience had no mask at all. A third had their mask pulled down over their, down to their chin, and everybody else, based on what I saw, was wearing cloth masks. The players on the court were unmasked, players on the sidelines were mostly unmasked, referees were both unmasked. Half the people at the official desk had their masks pulled down. Nobody cared, people had moved on. People will ask, what if a few more weeks matter? Why not let the mandate continue into January? It matters because our board is the most local of all government instrumentallies, and therefore has a heightened duty to use coercive government power only when absolutely necessary, because you're using it against members of your own community. The board should opt for choice over compulsion wherever it can, as it can tonight if it chooses to do so. This board should not continue to use its power to deprive students and parents of choice. It is the place of parents to make these choices with their children, not yours, anyone. You want to mask, mask. You want to get vaccinated, get vaccinated. I'm vaccinated, my wife is vaccinated. But don't force others to do it just because some in our community continue to embrace fear. COVID is now endemic. It's here to stay for a while, we all have to live with that reality. Everyone should have the right to make their own risk assessments and act accordingly. It's time to move to mask optional immediately and to allowing kids who have no symptoms or that test negative for negative from COVID to remain in school with their peers and teachers, even if they've had close contact. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rustica. I'm a parent of a current Southern Lehigh High School student, and I assume the grand weight during COVID. And I've personally seen the problems of online learning and seen the benefits of in-person learning. I was finding here that you recognize that Omicron cases are spreading rapidly through the area, and that in our schools, the aggregate case count has already doubled in the month of December, even with masking still in place. And that schools in our area, not Western TA, but schools like Navarre's High School and Bethel Catholic High School, who have already made masks optional, have failed to keep their kids in school and have to go back to required masking. Listening tonight, I think that we all agree that the goal is to keep our children in the classrooms, because we know that in-person learning is more effective. And secondly, to keep our children and their families safe and healthy. If you are truly worried about the children's mental health, you would not encourage them to transmit COVID to their parents and their grandparents, putting their families at risk. Imagine the difference in mental health between your child wearing masks and having to tell your child the consequences of not wearing masks, was that grandma died because of COVID. In terms of staying in the classroom, the Department of Health will shut down our schools if we see 5% students and staff having cases, or if there are three simultaneous outbreaks in school. This brings me to the experiment that you guys are proposing to run on our children and on our families, by removing most, if not all, of the core health and safety protocols, such as masking, distancing, and quarantine. As a concerned parent, I have to insist that whatever experiment you decide to do on our children and our families, we define what limits will be put in place to stop the experiment and reinstate the health and safety protocols we know have worked to keep our schools and our children healthy for the last four months. So I do have a vote. To meet the goal of keeping our children in person in the classrooms, I propose that whatever experiment you come up with tonight, we agree that if the aggregate case count in a quarantine day window goes above 3%, or there are two simultaneous classrooms and or four group outbreaks, we immediately return to the proven. we immediately return to the proven core health and safety protocols that we've been using successfully to keep our schools healthy. This gives us a small buffer for the Department of Health rule closure metrics, allowing us to meet the goal of keeping in-person education that we all agree is better for our children. Look, I hope you pray that we have enough students, staff, and families immune to COVID that in your experiment, whatever it is, is a success and we can stop masking and we can stop quarantine. But the statistics are against us and we cannot go into this one. If like Navarre's or Bethel Catholic, the experiment does fail, we need to be able to quickly identify and react so we can keep our kids and our classrooms and our students safe and our families safe and healthy.
The Southern Lehigh students and staff are currently in bondage to the unattained mask mandates and quarantine guidelines. This is not the American way and it violates our God-given American constitutional rights. As you are aware, the PA Supreme Court ruled that the Secretary of Health did not have the right to mandate masks in schools and thus agreed with the Commonwealth Court to lift the mask mandate, which has been lifted since December tenth. Irregardless of what people here tonight say about mask wearing and irregardless of what the CDC, AAP, and DOE recommend about mask wearing, the school board has no right to mandate masks and thus this policy should be changed immediately. We've been masked and had the opportunity for students to get the COVID vaccine. What does that tell us? The mitigation efforts are not working and make no sense to use. They're hurting, not helping, and cause more stress than anyone needs or wants. I will inform you that the same lawyers who sued the DOH are now going to sue the Secretary of Education in Harrisburg and this is planned to be filed before Christmas. In regards to the current quarantine guidelines in place, they need to be changed immediately. You're not allowed to quarantine healthy students, you're not allowed to discriminate against non-vax and non-mass students, and you have no right to tell a parent or student that a student has to get tested for COVID. That is the parent's decision. However, if a student has COVID, then they follow the quarantine guidelines, but you must provide them with good quality teaching instruction during their quarantine. This virus isn't going anywhere and the students need to get back to normalcy. It does not make any sense at all to mask our children in school from eight to three, but when they leave school, they live their lives playing with friends from school, playing school sports, attend football games, gatherings, parties, concerts, funerals, etc., all without wearing a mask, and then they go back to school to wear a mask. The school board and the Southern Lehigh administration's job is to make sure that the children are receiving a quality and successful education. Medical issues and concerns are the parent's job, not the school's job. The mask mandate and quarantining are causing so much chaos in the education system that is seriously impeding on the education of the children and it is the children who are losing in all of this. The mask mandate needs to be lifted today and the quarantine guidelines need to be changed today. Thank you.
Good evening. For the past few years, this whole thing has been an experiment. Initially, we were told not to mask, then we were told to mask. Six-foot distancing, three-foot distancing. Mask our athletes, don't mask our athletes. Mask outside, mask inside, double mask. Nobody has the real answers, we're all guessing. And there's no proof that anything we've done thus far has actually made a difference. So therefore, after two years of following the rules, following what everybody has played, put out in front of us, all the health people, all the CDC, Fauci, all those people who say they know better, nothing has changed. Our kids are still masked, we are still keeping them home. Zoom was an absolute disaster for that, for schooling. And our kids are the ones suffering. There is no reason why, after two years of following all those, that we can't try something new. I'm not saying, no, you're not allowed to wear a mask. I'm saying, let everybody have a choice. There is no reason why we can't have a choice. I'm a school bus driver, not for this district. Nobody wears masks properly. The kids don't wear masks properly in classrooms unless the teacher forces them to. The kids immediately take their masks off as soon as they leave the building before they get on the buses. Then they will pretend to put them on and it's under their nose. That is not helping, it's not stopping anything, it's not changing anything. I have a fleet of kids at my house all the time. None of them are masked. They go to the movies, they eat dinner, they go out, they kiss, they hang out, they snuggle and sleep in the same rooms and do, and to spend time and have sleepovers. Not in a weird way. But they are kids and they're living in kids' life. The only place that they don't get to have their normalcy is in these buildings. And that's not acceptable. They hang out in the same cars. They, they do, have you been shopping? Nobody's wearing masks, none of the kids. You go to the grocery store, the kid's mask, if mom makes them wear it, it's down there. This, this is not okay anymore. We need to realize that it's not okay. We need to change the quarantine. And thank you.
Good evening, my name is Marcy Johnson and I'm a parent of two children in the district as well as a licensed clinical social worker. Our decisions regarding COVID mitigation procedures need to be data-driven and guided by the experts in the field of infectious diseases. These decisions are not to be made by individuals who have taken issue with masking for whatever reason. Persons with legitimate medical or behavioral health issues that prevent them from wearing face masks are able to obtain exemptions and I assume have done so by now. And while I completely understand the inclination to say, as a parent, I know what's best for my child and let me decide what's best for my child, in this situation, we need to consider the bigger picture. This school district is a community, our individual actions affect one another. We can work together for the greater good to keep our children healthy and in school at the same time, or we can staunchly defend our individualistic viewpoint to unmask our kids without regard for all those around them. It's very simple. If I send my child to school without a mask on and she has COVID, she will more easily spread it to her peers, teachers, and staff. With universal masking, she will be wearing masks and therefore the chances are less likely of her spreading COVID. And there's less of a chance that others will have to quarantine because they will also be masked. Our students, faculty, and staff deserve an as safe as possible learning and working environment and it is within our ability to provide that. We share the air, we share these spaces, we need to share the responsibility of keeping each other safe. We don't have to like it or enjoy it, but as things stand, this is what it's called for. This virus exists, is highly transmissible, and is currently straining hospitals and medical clinics in our community. We need to remain vigilant with all mitigation measures. Public health decisions should not be a matter of public opinion based on people's pandemic fatigue or disdain for mitigation measures. Undeniably, none of us wants to be in this situation and dealing with this issue on and on, but we cannot let that deter us from doing what is right. We need to follow the recommendations of those who study this and who are clearly saying universal masking is what's needed in this situation. We need to stay the course with the multilayer approach and adjust the stringency based on current conditions on an ongoing basis and end of story. Finally, during the board's discussion of these issues tonight, I would like to hear from each member who disagrees with making decisions based on the advice of the medical community. I would like to hear, point by point, what information you are basing your decisions on instead. We all deserve to hear your rationale. And remember, your decisions do not occur in a vacuum. Individual choices during a health crisis affects the entire community, not just you and your child, it affects us all. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Patty Andrafano. I'm a board certified pediatrician and neonatologist with a master's degree in healthcare quality and safety and I'm currently enrolled in the Masters of Public Health program at U-Davidson University. We all want the best for our children, we all want to keep our children in school. Reversing the mask mandate could internally lead to increased COVID cases in our students and over a school closure as COVID case rates are too high. School closure is what is causing our mental health issues. This experiment in mask optional has already been performed in our country. A study in Arizona during the Delta surge, no masking schools were three and a half times more likely to have a school-associated outbreak than the mask mandated schools. So they were looking at transmission in school. Another study by the CDC, five hundred and twenty US counties during the Delta surge, no masking schools saw larger COVID case rates in the first seven hundred fourteen days of schools that mask mandated schools. So then they say, on Facebook, what about that Georgia study and the CDC? And there really wasn't a full difference, so therefore masks are ineffective. Well, those data were collected during the Alpha variant from November to December of 2020. While the other two studies that I had just mentioned were collected during the Delta surge. Imagine that implications. Delta had higher transmissibility and greater chance to impact children and we saw a difference between masking and mask optional schools. I would imagine that the Omicron numbers with double transmissibility Delta would show sharper contrast in numbers between mask mandate and mask optional schools. So I ask you, why would we subject our children as subjects to another failed experiment? I do not want masking to go on forever, but please, let's just at least set reasonable criteria to determine when students need to mask. The CDC recommends masking in indoor spaces during times of substantial and high transmission and mask optional for moderate to low transmission. We talked about high transmission, greater than a hundred per hundred thousand people. Lehigh County said five hundred and thirty-five per hundred thousand people. So why would we change our policy now with increased COVID case rates in our community? And please understand that masking is part of a layered mitigation strategy. We've all bought into it with our cars. Seat belts reduce the risk of death by forty-five percent. Airbags reduce the risk of death by twenty-nine percent. People will come along and say, oh, airbags only reduce the risk of death by twenty-nine percent. I don't want one. No. They say, I'm going to use my layered mitigation strategy for my car. I'm going to wear my seat belt, I'm going to have my airbag because I'd like to improve my chances of having a car crash. We need to do the same thing with keeping our kids in school during COVID surge. Masking is just one layer of that layered mitigation strategy. Masking with hand washing, ventilation, and vaccination. In terms of the mitigation, the modified quarantine guidelines, I agree with you, Dr. Webb, but we need to test our students. The CDC's test to stay program, two things. Number one, the two studies from the US that based that recommendation, they, they had mask mandates in place. And two, they tested the students and if they were positive, they were never removed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Ken, can you speak?
Dr. Ken, I'd like to speak.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and we thank you for the work that you do, school board. My name is Dr. Ken Andrafano, I'm a former board certified pediatrician and internal medicine doctor and now am a septicologist. Now is not the time to overturn the mask mandate or modify the quarantine guidelines. As predicted, COVID cases are rising in our community, reaching the same peak that they did last December and January. Hospital, hospital capacity is now a major concern in our area. Lehigh County, for instance, only has six percent of adult ICU beds available. Six point five percent of regular floor beds available. Newton-Hamilton County only has zero percent of adult ICU beds available and only eight point three percent of the med search beds available. I'm not trying to scare you, this isn't a platform of fear, this is reality. This is what is going on in our hospitals, in our community in Lehigh County. The situation's so dire that it ever holds. On December fifteenth, asked FEMA to step in and help some strengthen hospital systems. And it wasn't too long ago that Geisinger Medical Center was on diver. That means they had no room at their hospital for sick patients. COVID, we're not COVID. If we run out of beds in our community, it means we run out of beds with everyone. You, me, my children, my father-in-law. COVID patients and non-COVID patients are all the same. Tragic story occurred in Texas this past summer. An army veteran, two tours of duty in Afghanistan. He went in for a non-COVID diagnosis, pancreatitis was serious. His care was delayed because there was no beds, there were no ICU beds in the area in which he was staying. He died with his ultimate delay in care. He survived two tours of duty in Afghanistan, but he died in a hospital in the United States. That's unsurprising. Lastly, why is this important? Why do, why am I talking about adults? Because what happens with our children directly affects what happens with them. So a recent paper published in the Journal of Infectious Diseases showed that a decent or mildly infected COVID positive child could carry and shed more virus than a hospitalized adult patient with COVID. The paper also demonstrated that any child with COVID that's most infected within thirty-five days of getting sick. This research demonstrates that we should not disregard current quarantine or mask guidelines because it could lead to an increased case rate in our community and of course within our schools. I would be in favor of test to stay programs. Children serve as reservoirs for this virus and will contribute and do contribute to increased case rate within our community. It would be irresponsible and dangerous to the community to reverse the mask mandate and COVID mandate. Thank you for your attention.
I'm here to ask for a mask optional. I'm not here to debate the efficacy of masks for intravenous case counts. I'm simply here to explain that because of the Supreme Court Pennsylvania has heard in front of both the courts ruling on the mask order, their decision has officially ended there. The court's ruling affirmed that gay public schools would lack a Commonwealth meeting. Just like the Department of Health, we do not have the statutory authority to mandate masks. Because the nineteen forty-nine state school code which governs and protects public schools does not give them the authority. Continuing mask mandates in our district only opens us up, open our schools to potential litigation. And consulting, as we came with two other attorneys, both have said that the PA school code by ten would never hold up in court as a reason for us to mandate masks. The vaccine has now been available to children who are five years old. Everyone in our district has had this opportunity and still has to get vaccinated if they choose. That's the best option for them. I do believe masks are harmful towards children in long-term and short-term. Social skill development have issues, children losing identity, difficulty breathing, headaches, fatigue, infections, weather, bedmats issues which make them ineffective, and mental health issues. Our children's mental health does matter. I have two young boys in the district and do have four masks. My boys get a headache, have teeth, have behavior, concentration issues. Last year I hired a retired teacher, a tutor, my oldest son, he would look like when I failed fourth grade. I still have for tutoring my son today due to the concentration issues that he had with the mask. My younger son does have asthma and wearing a mask does lessen asthma exposure. Please keep in mind that to continue to keep our children in masks just based on recommendations and guidance from the CDC, State Health, and LDA were hoping to open up potential education in our districts already in the area that are being sued and that will be starting soon that have already been hold up. Please give our children the breathing and the sense of normalcy back. We're just asking for the option to choose for them to have normal education now. We're not taking the choice away from parents who want to continue to mask their children. It should be our choice no matter which option we choose. And apart from all the harm that masks are causing towards children's health and education, we have to remember that the bottom line really is, by the legal basis, the inclusion of the Commonwealth Court, which was upheld and confirmed by the case of Supreme Court, is in the absence of any authorizing law regulating in the absence of any authorizing law, regulation, or statute, all districts do not have the statutory authority to mandate masks. Please allow us, as parents, to make these mental decisions for our children, just like the courts have decided. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Glenn Laberry. As no one on the board is an infectious disease expert, any decisions to reduce mitigation could be made using data and expert advice. At the county level, new COVID cases were the highest they've seen last winter, and local hospitals are again overwhelmed. And our school's cases have increased significantly since late November. We do not have enough substitute teachers to staff our classrooms. This hardly seems like the right time to reduce mitigation. I can sympathize with the desire to keep our children in school. Dr. Strain's proposal of a test to stay during quarantine seems like a reasonable approach if we can adequately staff such a program. We should include language in our health and safety policy to fall back on the current quarantine if at any point we cannot staff test to stay or if we do not get enough test kits. Some of our views might that making masks optional is a reasonable middle ground. Unfortunately, that's not how masks work. Masks work by preventing someone who has COVID from infecting others. Sick and possibly asymptomatic children will spread COVID in our schools if they're unmasked. Unmasking a child in classroom isn't simply personal choice, it affects every other person in that room. Two weeks ago, a student in a northern Philadelphia high school fell ill with COVID-19 and passed away a week later. Teachers and students gathered last week to mourn her death and to ask the school to adopt stricter COVID mitigation. This happened less than 50 miles from here. Let's not pull ourselves that something like that can't happen here. I get it, wearing a mask isn't fun, but we know they can help prevent the spread of COVID. Are we sure this is a risk we're willing to take? No one is suggesting we should mask forever. When case rates in our school and community are low, when the majority of our students are vaccinated, when our hospitals have enough room to care for the sick, when we can adequately staff our schools, that's when we should be talking about masking. But that day isn't today. I'll say it again because it bears repeating, no one on this board is infectious disease expert. No one on this board is qualified to invent a school health policy. As a district, we have always closely followed expert advice informed by both data. As a result, our children were able to return to in-person learning last spring and we remain focused ever since. Removing the very message that have kept our children safely in school is a mistake. If we're going to reduce our prudent mitigation strategies, we should do so at least one at a time. As with any experiment, changing multiple variables at once makes it impossible to understand which one actually affected the outcome. Finally, if we are seriously considering reducing our current mitigation strategies in spite of the data and the expert advice, then at the minimum, we need a detailed plan. This plan should provide a clear direction on what the administration should do in the event of an outbreak. Let's not wait until we are faced with a crisis to start planning. Let's decide how we handle that situation tonight, write it down in our health and safety plan. Thank you.
Melissa Torba. Good evening. My name is Melissa Torba. I've lived in the district for 18 years with my husband and our daughter who attends OHL. I'd like to recognize our administrators and staff for doing everything they can to keep our students in school, for in-person learning, being able to conduct musical performances, and continuing to play sports. To say this school year is unusual would be an understatement. To say this school year is challenging would be even a greater understatement. Like many school districts in the nation, our district is functioning with a skeleton crew. It's no secret there's a shortage of teachers, instructional aides, bus drivers, an increase in retirements, and excessive staff burden. Even in our own backyard, our middle school and high school staff have had to combine multiple classrooms and seat students in the auditorium, essentially creating a study hall. And our teacher had to cover a social studies class, yet again, a study hall. A classroom unable to start a new lesson because the teacher has been out sick? These are a few examples of how our learning environments are being affected by today's challenges and hindering our ability to maintain high-quality education. With the increase in student and staff absenteeism, I ask, are we prepared? If we are not prepared, if we don't plan ahead, the end result could lead to such things as shorter school days, virtual days, increased classroom sizes because we have to bring classrooms together, even the elimination of programs such as reading interventions because that reading specialist is being used for class coverage. This is a complex problem to solve, but it's not a complex problem to prepare for. Our skeleton crew of staff members are doing their best to keep our students in our buildings, yet learning is not meeting our standards because our staff are being tasked with other responsibilities. Our learning environments have been affected, continue to be affected, by the global circumstances we are experiencing. Are we prepared to handle the challenges and maintain the high-quality education our students deserve, our community expects, and our staff desire? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for calling this special board meeting to discuss the future of health and safety plan for our school district. And thank you for allowing me to share your time to work through this for a quick experience. I urge you to keep the change in the policy to make masks optional for our children in our schools starting January 11th. I have not wavered from this stance since before the start of this school year, and I will continue to petition for the freedom of choice. I know that plenty of people here in our community will continue to say that this is a selfish act, but I think it's selfish and reasonable to people who expect me to mask my kids against my will. Just because you look at things from a different perspective and analyze the data in a different way does not make your interpretation of that data the correct one. No one is trying to stop any parent from having their child wear a mask, but please stop forcing your opinion on my children. I want my children to breathe freely. Please stop treating COVID as a death sentence. There also continues to be plenty of hypocrisy and lack of consistency. I was saddened to hear that the recent choral and instrumental concerts required children to wear masks. It was decided after a lengthy discussion at the meeting on November 22nd that 30 minutes after the last bell, students could choose whether they want to wear a mask or not. Instead, the audience is required to wear a mask, but not the students. There seems to be some sort of disconnect for the guidelines that were put in place. Also, there are community members that are speaking out to keep the mask mandate in school, and yet they are somehow okay with their own children playing sports unmasked. I'm pretty sure there's a lot more risk of spreading an airborne virus while observing oneself playing a sport than while sitting at a desk learning. As for the current quarantine rules, I have been frustrated by the inconsistencies among the different schools and classes, but more so, I'm upset by the discrimination being enforced while our healthy children that did not receive the COVID shot being sent home, but immunized children are allowed to continue to go to school. By all means, please feel free to choose to get your child immunized, but that decision should not reward anyone or their families by giving them special treatment. Immunization is not preventative, it is therapeutic. The purpose is not to minimize severity. The purpose is to minimize the severity of virus. It's more destructive, not to prevent actions that can cause progression. I will not keep a healthy child home again. I'm not trying to be combative here, and if anyone in my family were to become ill, I would absolutely keep everyone home, but I refuse to keep them home because of potential exposure. Thank you for your time.
Danielle Pursey.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Like you, I want our kids to stay in school all time. Omicron has spread from 0.7% to 73% of COVID cases in just two weeks. There's still a lot we don't know. Even if kids get masked, they can still spread it at home and in school to teachers and staff. Your mask protects me, my mask protects you. Regardless of whether you believe this, if schools shut down or we have to immediately go back to a mask mandate, you will look foolish. Removing the mask mandate also visually separates our kids from school. There's enough political division in our community, let's not make it worse in our schools. Finally, what the school board should be focused on is supporting our teachers and staff, the people we entrust our children to each day. Nationwide, it is difficult to hire now. I believe it is also difficult to be a teacher in this environment. Please focus on making sure we support and retain our teachers and staff and keep our schools open. Thank you.
If anyone is wondering why really good teachers and administrators are leaving this district, this meeting is a perfect example of why. The entire line of parents who think that they should get in their way against the advice of the district's physician, Department of Education, and the Department of Health, and they would force school employees to work on the night before winter break to get their way just a few school days earlier than already planned. I don't blame these employees for leaving, and I calmly assume that more will follow. I have two kids in the district, and I have a teacher myself and another one. I've been teaching in a mask since last year, and I am very much looking forward to the day when I no longer have to. However, now is not the time when peace is relevant. My school has a plan based on community transmission, just like Dr. Strain suggested, and this makes sense. And obviously, I am not the only one that feels this way. And some parents who pass have developed liberty, but I think it's important for you to hear from other families who want life in the pursuit of happiness. Yes, the election has recently held, but it's important to remember that the votes were split almost in half. It was not a runaway, and you should not ignore the parents who want to continue safety protocols a bit longer. My children have a right to a safe learning environment from the Southern High School District. Cases are rising, young kids are not fully vaccinated. I was shocked by the statistics of how kids are actually are vaccinated. My 13-year-old had her second dose of vaccine back in June, so now she's six months past that and we can't get her booster yet because we're eight. Her safeguard is people around her wearing masks. And this is particularly true because some community members are acting as though the pandemic is over. They go out in public unmasked, they do everything they did two years ago. And I admit, it must be nice to live in a world where COVID doesn't exist, but I live in reality where just last week, a 17-year-old in Philadelphia died one week after contracting COVID, or yesterday, one of my students told me that her grandmother died of COVID over the weekend. My family is not hiding out in our house, but we are taking precautions because we care about the people around us. We see hospitals overwhelmed and we want to slow the spread so that our hospital workers can do their jobs appropriately, not turn people away or force long waits in the emergency room. In fact, our doctor in our community was livid when they heard that you were having this meeting tonight to unmask schools. They told me that perhaps you should come and spend some time in the emergency room to truly understand the scope of what is happening. So my son had a fever and a cough last week when his negative COVID test came back. LDAHN included the following with his results. All patients who consider the following important advice, and the number one suggestion, is to wear a mask in public. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Sidenberger. I'm a former teacher of Southern High, and I'm also a parent of two young children. Two healthy young children, one of which is vaccinated and the other will be as soon as she is older enough. I am not for masks because I am scared for my children. I have healthy children and I do feel that they will be okay if they were to ever contract COVID. I am for masks because I teach my children that part of being a good American, part of being a good human being is looking out for those who are not as fortunate as us. Not every parent can stand here and say that they have two healthy children. There are parents in this split shift of children with pre-existing conditions, with cancer, with things I cannot ever imagine. Wearing a mask is inconvenient, but it is worth it to keep the nearest members of our community safe. It is worth it if it prevents even one death. I also wanted to make a personal, semi-personal, I guess, comment about insurance testing and test to stay. My husband is an elementary school principal in the Montgomery School District, and his school was the pilot school for both assurance testing last year and test to stay this year. He has had quite a few school administrators come through his district or his school to watch how it goes, and I'm sure he would welcome anyone who is interested. He has really seen it helps. He has seen that kids are able to stay in school and that it is not spreading. Thank you very much.
Brian Better.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Better. I am a parent of five children here at the Southern High School District. Thank you very much for taking the time to consider an update to the health and safety plan. And I feel it's really overdue because I really do not think that the current plan is working for the students. Their education is suffering as a result of this plan. You know, one example is, I think somebody mentioned this before, that we have a teacher who has been out of school since just after Thanksgiving, over three and a half weeks. One of my children has been in the study hall each morning as opposed to actually receiving education in person, taught education. There are some, there are a few worksheets that they fill out from time to time, but otherwise, it's just a study hall. That's not what I expect for him as a parent, and that's not what he needs as a student. Another example is it's families outside of my house, not my own household, but there have been many students that are healthy and have been kept at home due to the current quarantine procedures. And same type of situation, the policies that we have in place and what we do to help teach those students at home is insufficient. So with these warrants, we have to really consider what is happening and the education that the students are receiving when they are at home. What we're doing right now is not working, and that needs to change. Another topic that has been, that we should consider, is that our current policy is not being communicated or followed. So I think another person mentioned this morning, this evening as well, that the, to have masks on, or students, 30 minutes after the last bell, students are allowed to stay at the hall. And that had to do with the orders around the ban, and they were not informed of it. I don't believe staff is informed of it, and their board does not follow. So the policy that this board passed in November, yeah, that's what I was just mentioning about, and that needs to be pushed forward. Anyway, so we are also not focusing on the mental health of our students, and this one is very personal to me. One of my children is having a tough go of it. They are feeling overwhelmed and very anxious about many things at school outside of academics. The daily stress of seeing friends pull out of class and the fear of being moved to close contact and on other things. Getting mental health support is also not easy. We had an appointment set up, but we're told we were not in network. We offered to pay up on it in full, and we were refused to be seen when you're told we had to go somewhere else. Now the waiting period to help my child is several Now the waiting period to help my child is several months. And in the case of a mental health situation, that several months, in my opinion, is far too long. It needs to be something more immediate. We all want the best possible for education for our children. The current health and safety plan does not support this. There are too many cases of keeping healthy kids at home or preventing and preventing in-home instructions. Our teachers are fantastic, I truly believe that, but they need to be in front of the kids to fully connect and inspire with them. As it just changes the quarantine policy, keeping only symptomatic cases at home, just as we would with the flu, the fever, or a stomach bug. Additionally, we cannot create segregation based on vaccination standards that I have seen suggested in social media. Let's get back to why we all moved into the school district, a premium education for our system. Thank you.
Bill Young?
Good evening. I wasn't going to talk about masks, but it seems to be that topic, so I just wanted to talk on that real quick. Maybe as a compromise between Mr. Divi and Mrs. King is maybe voting on this and making it effective on January eleventh, so immediately to allow for what Mr. Divi is talking about. I find it hard to believe that all these people are talking about our kids can't go to school without masks, but these kids are playing sports, these kids are doing other events. It's being portrayed that the only way your kid's going to catch COVID or pass it along is in the classroom. There are sporting activities, we're talking about grandparents and young kids who can't get vaccinated. Pretty sure all the adults in the school are going out to grocery stores and other stores, surrounded by people without masks. This isn't the only way that those people who can't be vaccinated or are immunocompromised could get COVID. And I think we're trying to portray everything as classroom, classroom, classroom. So my bill would be for a mask option. What I really want to talk about is your consideration and revise of the quarantine plan. As one of the other members mentioned, my daughter was exposed to a test of close contact on a Tuesday. She was notified the problem on Monday, and she was told if she had a test, she could come back on Thursday, or Monday to come back. No symptoms. I'm not sure why, there are two separate guidelines for vaccinated persons and unvaccinated. We're making decisions based on the data and science. If you look at the professional league right now, there are tons of COVID cases, mostly all vaccinated. League's are shutting down, the NHL has shut down for the winter until next year. It's clear that COVID is being passed by vaccinated people. So I'm not sure why vaccinated person who's in close contact can just go to school, whereas as some people say, my healthy child has to stay home for seven to ten days or fourteen. So I would just ask that we look at that policy and just make that same requirements for everyone. If you're showing those symptoms and you're in close contact, you can go to school. If you're showing symptoms, you stay home. Doesn't seem to be rocket science. So I would just ask for you guys to look at this quarantine information and possibly go along with masking. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
My purpose here tonight is to make sure the board is fully informed before it makes decisions. We shouldn't be here tonight, and I'm here to explain why this meeting is invalid. The new board members were not eligible to be sworn in on December sixth because they owed the county thousands of dollars in fines for not submitting required campaign finance statements. So the votes that were cast were invalid. One of those votes was for president. The only reason we are here tonight is because invalid board members called this meeting. The next day after that meeting, Christopher Wayar called the county. He learned that everything I explained was true. The correspondence, this correspondence from the deputy chief clerk of elections is filed as public record at the county. Good morning, Chris. As per our conversation we had yesterday, twelve-seven, you wanted to address allegations that were made against you and others during the school board meeting on twelve-six. One of the allegations made was that you were in violation of campaign finance laws. I have reviewed this matter with the director, Tim, and our solicitor, and since you did not sign a waiver of expense affidavit when you did your petition, you do owe two reports to our office. For the two late reports, the total due is five hundred dollars. Since you did win your seat, before our office issues a certification of election, all obligations must be fulfilled with our office. Once again, before their office issues a certification of election, all obligations must be fulfilled with their office. After that, Wayar paid London Reiner, then what I told you was required for them to assume office, which was submitting their reports and paying their late fees. I have copies of their new reports and their late fees, all dated after December sixth. All their combined late fees totaled two thousand six hundred fifty dollars. Both the email from the deputy chief clerk of elections and the compliance by the newly-elected board members in correcting their errors substantiates my claim that they did not follow campaign finance reporting laws and were not eligible to be sworn in on December sixth. Therefore, their votes for president that night were invalid, which means the president was invalid, and it means it is unlikely that there would have been enough valid board members to call this special meeting. Instead, the board should be waiting until the next scheduled board meeting, starting over with electing a temporary president again, properly swearing in the newly-elected board members, and properly electing board officers. You are, of course, welcome to ignore me again. You are welcome to only follow the law when forced to by the court system. But please keep in mind that if a court case finds that the votes on December sixth are null and void, needing to be voted on again, and that the calling of this meeting was null and void because it was called by an invalid president, supported by invalid board members, and that the votes that will take place tonight are null and void, then you could be setting up the district for having unstable swings in policy and leave the community to wonder if you will continue to wilfully ignore the laws. Wouldn't it be better to do things the correct way so that our community has stability and confidence in its leadership? Thank you.
Beth Stepenson?
Good evening. I'm Beth Stepenson. Thank you. They thrive when the community around them is healthy and stable. They don't thrive physically or mentally, on their parents, siblings, teachers, grandparents, or in the case of mine, little girl, her bus driver, what happened to be sick? She loves her so much. Masking, distancing, smart warrants and policies not only allow our children to learn safely, they slow viral spread to keep our whole community healthy. Our local hospitals are in crisis planning mode right now. COVID-19 in Florida RSV are all ramping up at the same time. As you've already heard, and I can attest, healthcare for everyone is worse for hospitals during crisis. That is not good for kids. Let's prioritize our community and keep our kids learning in person. Listen to the speakers before me who said it so much better than I, and with such better mentors. Continue masking until the key rates go down, consider smart quarantine policies like test to stay, and set reasonable thresholds for when you should consider adjusting the health and safety policy further. Thank you.
Chris Kingsbury?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Chris Kingsbury, and I've lived in this community for eighteen years. I appreciate all that you do. My concern right now is the fact that we're experiencing something that hasn't happened in over a hundred years, and the fact that we are considering letting our kids ignore the fact that this is an unprecedented time, a pandemic that affects everyone else in this community. It affects our parents, our grandparents, our children, those that are vaccinated, those that are not vaccinated. The fact that we're considering unmasking in our school district at a time where a bearing of this virus, for which the vaccine that our children have received is about thirty percent effective in adults, is something that's unfathomable. The fact that we want to make this a situation in which we want to politicize, we want to go against what it is that the science does say to us, the fact that we want to be the person that stops the loudest that wants to get our way, that's not what we should be doing. We should be gathering together, talking about this, and actually following the science and teaching our children to be responsible members of society. That is our job, that is our responsibility as parents and educators, and like letting the people that stop the loudest get their way, that is not going to be the answer. We need to go through, have a discussion, figure out what is the best interest of all of us. This is not an easy decision. This is not a binary decision. It's not yes, it's not no. There's a lot of gray area here. And for us to make you allowable decisions that say we should do this or we shouldn't do this, that's not what we should do. We should be having a conversation about facts and about the data that is available to us today. Thank you.
Hello, I'm here again asking you, leading for this board, to follow the law. Something that the previous boards have seemed to have no problem with doing in the past, whether it's been complying with right to know, whether it's been releasing children's data without parents' consent. The real irony is that when you pretended, or previous board pretended, to try and comply with right to know, they were backing the doctrine so badly that it doesn't really tell us anything. So you've seen that for previous boards, you have no problem with releasing stuff that you should and not releasing the things you should. Mr. Lysit, you've asked this board several times at meetings over the last month. Do you have the right to enforce these rules? The board kind of seems to never answer that question. The court has finally answered it for all of you. No, you don't. Okay? It's very clear, the court has said that it's about choice now for parents. You've ignored pro-choice communities for over a year. They comply, hold on, knowing that it's not most likely they're legal, but comply, but you cater to a small and local group that's pro-mask. The courts made it clear, families have the choice in handling public schools. Now it's time for pro-maskers to follow the rules, or I should say the law. It's about choice. You have the choice. Mask your children, vaccinate your children, double mask your children, send them in a mask and a face shield, put super gear on, send them to another school if you'd like to try it. It's about choice now, and it's about time that you start to let those parents who follow the rules now, as the board has made it clear, to have that choice. We continue to talk about vaccination rates. Every family has the right to choose to vaccinate or not vaccinate their children. I completely agree with that. I do have a problem with you guys as a school board talking about knowing about that data because you have no right to that data. And in light of your recent failure to protect Southern High's school student data in the past, I would hope and pray that none of you would ever allow them to have that data in their hands, but they blew it in the past. Okay? The intent of the law is clear. You owe students an education, and families a choice about masking. I'm going to go back and ask you again, can you just please for once follow the law? You're setting this school district up for a huge lawsuit in China. It's my taxes. I'd rather see it go to the new building, I'd rather see it go to more teachers, I don't want to see it go to paying off legal suits because you can't follow the law. Please follow the law, you know the intent.
Hello, good evening. So I am a father of four students here in the district, two of which are vaccinated, two of which are not eligible at this time due to their age. I'm also a practicing board certified physiatrist in the area. And you know, the major thing that I just want to say is that I'm not against anybody's particular point of view, especially when backed up. What I have a problem with and why I decided to speak at least tonight is that in this time, where we're seeing the second word served that we've seen since the November, December twenty twenty served, right around the holiday, to call an emergency meeting to really address something like this is just, it just seems irresponsible to me, to be honest. You know, our hospitals are overrun, we're overworked, this is a bad time, and I'm not saying let's not revisit this, and I'm not saying let's talk about updating the way that we deal with quarantine and the way that we deal with masking. I'm just honestly thinking that the time that we're doing it right now is the problem. Now, everybody has a right to their belief, and that's absolutely true, but I think the timing right now could not be worse. And now I have two kids that cannot be vaccinated. I'm personally immunocompromised, but I still do my job because it's the right thing to do. Do I like wearing a mask? No. Do I like wearing two masks? No. Do I like wearing two masks and a face shield? No. But it's necessary for other people, and that's what I'm doing tonight. I had to speak up, I could not just let this go. I think the timing is poor. I do not disagree that we can talk about it at another time, but right now it's just really, really bad. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Justin Spile. Chair medicine for the state with specialist, and I take care of COVID patients every day. You know, I struggled really hard trying to find the right things to say, there's so many anecdotes popped in my head about the decision to call an emergency meeting to remove masks at the time that we did, but why we're here now. And really, the one that jumped to my mind was, it's literally like my neighbor's house is on fire, there's a fire across town, there's a fire over there, and I don't like the sirens on the fire trucks, it wakes my kid up at night. So I want to call a meeting because I want to get rid of the sirens on the fire truck. It sounds ridiculous, but it's the same thing. And it's not about, it's not about the kids getting sick, nobody's going to argue that the kids don't really get sick, they don't have that sickness tonight. It's about the kids spreading it to other people. So the anecdote of, oh, this whole family had COVID and the kid was fine, yeah, I get that. You know, last week, I admitted a grandfather and a daughter, daughter was like fifty years old. Her one health element was that she was obese, like a little bit obese, like chubby, not like four hundred fifty pounds, I'm talking like obese, like honestly, like me, and which I didn't really happy about. She did not tell me it was a lawsuit. She got it from her kids. So every anecdote has another anecdote, so to, 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 to call this meeting is a little bit under risk in honesty. And I do appreciate that there's a lot of, a lot of people coming up saying conflicting things. A lot of people coming up saying, well, this study says this, this study says that. It's confusing. It's confusing to me, and I'm supposed to know, I'm a doctor, right? I'm supposed to know. But I'll tell you what I do know. There's a reason you don't call a cardiologist if you have lung cancer. There's a reason you don't call an obstetrician when you break your egg, right? There's a reason for that. You actually go to the experts and follow the science. It's ludicrous to do otherwise. So I'm trying to wrap my head around the decision-making process there, about like getting expert opinion and just saying, well, I don't really like that, so I'm going to ignore it. That's really what I'm hearing we're doing. And the other thing I wanted to say that I find a little distressing is, we seem to be focusing just on the kids, but the last time I checked, there's a lot of other people who work in school buildings besides there's a lot of other people who work in school buildings besides children or go to the school building every day who are also going to be at risk. If you talk about removing masks for kids without talking about what it might mean to the teachers, it's actually irresponsible and rather upsetting. So, um, and finally, I don't think you'll like what I'm going to say, but it, you know, it used to be we, us, and now it's me, mine. And it used to be, at least I think a lot of us grew up with, you know, being an adult is sometimes doing what you don't want to do the hardest thing because that's the right thing for everybody, not what I want to do. And that to me is where we are now. And that's why I'm saying like, there's no rush to remove these masks. There's no rush to do that in the, in the middle of a surge. It's ludicrous to do so. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, my name is Matt Pringle. I have no medical expertise. I'm not a doctor. I had no intention of speaking tonight. Um, but I felt the need to, uh, I'm a teacher in this high school. Uh, my wife is a kindergarten teacher at Liberty Bell. I have two children in this district. I'm the vice president of our Little League Association, vice president of our Teachers Association. Um, so although I don't know much about medicine, a little bit about kids, because I spent about 16 hours in my day with children on a daily basis and I, and I love doing so. Um, I, a lot of wonderful comments made tonight. I'm not going to rehash any of those. Um, and I certainly respect everyone's opinions. I just, I felt the need to address a couple of things that were said this evening uh, that have not been addressed yet. Uh, one, one of the things that keeps coming to my mind, a doctor way out alluded to it a little bit. This board ran on a platform of keeping our kids in school five days. And that is music to my ears, music to all of my fellow teachers' ears, to all of our administrators, to our board. Uh, we need our children to, we don't need them at home. Uh, the problem is, if they are sick, they can't be in school. Um, and I think we all acknowledge that remote learning is about the farthest thing from ideal as possible. My wife teaches 25-year-olds. She's got one or two at Zoom, you know, one Zoom at home. Um, ineffective is, to say the least, uh, very, 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 very challenging. And certainly we don't want that. Um, so we need to do whatever it takes to keep our children in school as much as possible. A lot of great points been made before that. Um, Mr. Dimick, I thought made a great point about the fact that this board had already decided moving forward to January 11th, uh, whether that is right or not right. I think that was already decided, I thought that was the correct decision as well. Um, but that is neither here nor there. Um, we do have mental health issues in our students and, and in our adults as well. The last 18, 20, 24 months, there's been a ton of things that have contributed to that. But knowing our children, the one thing that has not contributed to the mental health of our students is wearables. There are so many things. I asked my, my wife, and she has trouble keeping masks on 5-year-olds. She says, no, I'm a slight fit, I think they go off of recess. And I tell the kids, you can take your masks off. And they keep in mind because they follow rules. Um, if a high school gets easier just to keep them all on, whatever it is. Do I necessarily agree with it? Doesn't matter if I agree with it, it's the rule. Um, another thing I know about children is if you make it mask optional at the middle school and high school level, uh, that's going to be a problem. That's going to be a real problem. Because whether parents want their child in the mask or not, the child has something to do with who she was when they are at school. And a lot of it's going to be dependent on what, kind of what their friends do. Um, Ms. Ken, you spoke about the, you know, mental aspect of, you know, having acne. I had a full face full of acne when I was 13 years old. I turned out all right. Okay, I apologize. I wish everyone a wonderful holiday. I want to make one last point, and that is in the classroom on a daily basis, we teach our children that whether you agree with a rule or not, okay, it is respectful to follow that rule. And I find it appalling that I look down at this audience right now and so many people can't do that.
Good evening, everybody. Before we get started normally, but here's a pair of things before I come here, but didn't today. But I just want to introduce myself and go offhand. I am one of those entitled, pesky parents of two children in the district that thinks that, you know, it's best for his children. Um, I haven't checked what terms can get out through here. So first of all, uh, one, in response to one person that brought up seatbelts, seatbelts and airbag comparisons. I've heard this comparison brought up many, many times in regards to masks. And what we fail to recognize is that seatbelts have, there are stipulations that are regulated. There's a reason why you don't buy a Ford that has a piece of Baylor's line for a seatbelt, but you buy Mercedes with a regulated seatbelt. They all have the same dang seatbelts. And that's because they're regulated. Masks are not regulated at any level, nor have they been. We've been told that a face covering is fine. Doesn't matter if it's cloth, doesn't matter if it's a, a surgical one or if it's can 95. Yes, there are studies that show differences between them, but there's no regulation. So that is a really, really bad comparison and I really wish it would go away. Um, I also want to ask, I would love to give a poll. I know it's not going to happen, but how many people here over the last two years have actually made a positive health change for themselves? You know, on average, the number that has come up is the average person's gained around 20 pounds over the last two years. We've known a couple of things from the very beginning of all of this. Children are least affected, elderly are most affected. There are things that will increase your risk of illness and death. Obesity is one of those things. We all make risks. Life is full of risk mitigation and choices and we all make tons of those every day. Um, we need to teach our children, and I said this back on the 22nd, we need to teach our children about risk mitigation. And we need to stop demonizing those who make choices that are different than us. I don't care what you do in regards to masking and vaccination. If that's what you want to do, that's your decision. And I find it very appalling and most of, look, we're all tired of all of this. Everybody is. But I find it appalling that we can even have a sitting board member make a snarky remark about someone who chooses not to wear a mask. You know, there are people who have issues that prevent them from wearing masks or prevent them from getting vaccinated. But yet we have community members, school board members, uh, medical professionals, politicians, neighbors, and even President of the United States, all demonizing those who choose to make a choice that differs from somebody else. And that is disgusting, absolutely disgusting. You don't know what I've been through. I don't know what you've been through. I don't, frankly, I don't care. That's up to you, just like this is up to me. That's it. Yeah, that's it.
Good evening. Uh, Dr. K. R. Clarus, I have addressed the board and you guys a couple of times already in the past. We have a large group of physicians that live in the community and we all have our kids in the school district you've heard of behind the wall of, of them tonight. We are extremely concerned. The surge in COVID cases is overwhelming our hospitals. Every single patient that we operated this past couple of weeks had to stay in the pack with us at the post-anesthetic care unit or same-day surgery because we do not have beds to admit them. These are elective cases. We're seriously looking at potentially spouting doing elective surgeries again, just like it happened last year because of the surge. Over the last couple of weeks, our emergency rooms have gone into diversion, meaning that they will use our transfers and patients as they cannot handle the current capacity. We heard that from Geisinger as well. Tonight, we have close to 40 patients in the emergency room, tonight, waiting for beds because we don't have them. Couple of weeks ago, during a very contentious meeting, someone brought some papers and allegations. Someone suggested that we should look at those papers. Mr. Dimick very appropriately said that this was not appropriate, that it was not the role of the board to investigate or look into the term of this picture, not at all. He stated that there were proper channels and other legal means to do so. That took courage. I respect that. What he said tonight took courage. Very own point. I respect that as well. My question to all you tonight is, why is it that in a similar fashion, the board is trying to make decisions that pertain to the public health of our community? This is not up to you. Someone just mentioned, these are not legal healthcare experts. The role of the board should be to follow the guidelines of healthcare experts and authorities, the recommendation of the two largest healthcare networks within our area that look after the health and wellbeing of our community and are currently struggling with the new surge of the COVID cases. We have the luxury of having a board member that is a physician. I am sure he has told you that foregoing the masking recommendations goes directly against everything that our network is recommending for the community and our kids. And it definitely goes against what the network mandates for their employees. Please, I exhort you all, board members, continue to follow some medical advice and recommendations. Having people come here and say, you know, we don't wear masks, people are not wearing masks and they're not getting sick. It's like bragging that you're driving drunk and you're not getting in your car to the accident.
You need to wrap up.
Please don't politicize this. Healthcare has no policies. Our ideas need you. You need to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm going to say this is the worst podium filled speaker conference I've ever been to. Uh, I would like to say that I do speak in favor of listening to the experts on these issues. As far as I know, the pediatric, American Pediatric Association, the AMA, any number of medical associations, our local hospital systems, our, our doctors groups, all support this masking requirement. I have to say on a personal level, uh, I've seen, I, I once saw an elementary kid. Uh, I'm aware of all the harmful things that go on on their hands and whatnot on a daily basis. And I can say that, uh, my concern lay more with the whole factors. Uh, children can carry the disease, you may not even know it and, uh, spread it onto others. We made sure our daughter was vaccinated the very first day we get it. We got her vaccinated. She's been wearing a mask diligently ever since this whole thing started. Uh, my personal concern is, for instance, uh, my sister. She's years younger than I am. She has, uh, a medical condition that compels her to take medications that reduce her autoimmune response. Uh, similarly, I also have two elderly parents. And all three of those people are much more likely than, much more liable to get a break, what's called a breakthrough occurrence of COVID. And so that having the outcome can be very grim. Uh, again, my wife is a doctor at a local hospital. She's going to speak here. I'm kidding, sorry. Um, uh, I know what it's been like for her. She's, she's the frontline, the front line as I've seen a couple of her coworkers here. Uh, it's been really bad. Uh, she comes home shell shocked. Uh, last week she did seven days straight, mostly 10-hour days, so 12-hour days. And Saturday was 14-plus. Uh, she's just working on a hospital tour. Uh, every day she comes home, her stories about, and it sounds... It's a very serious problem. I'm worried for my family. I think it's a very real problem. Our experts aren't the best. They've, they've messed up a lot, but I still think that's the best thing we have to cling to. Follow our experts, let's get through this together and end this mess. Thank you.
Good evening and, um, I think all of you is everyone. I'll be honest, I didn't prepare anything because I wasn't particularly sure that I was. Um, that being said, the motivation that brought me here this evening, I think it's the same with everybody else in this room, parents, board, or administrator, is we all want our children to have the best possible, um, current situation that they can given the worldwide pandemic. I think what's nice to hear is that everybody's goal is the same. We want what's best for our children. And what we all agree on is that it's in school, but, um, I am a board certified pediatrician, I am a board certified hematologist, and I'm a mother of two. So I've spent a good portion of my life that I've given to providing for children and giving to them what I best can. A lot of people have said very on-point things. The science is not 100%. And yes, guidelines have gotten changed and things have changed. But this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing that we're going through and that is fluid. And nothing is locked in one, and we all live in a gray area. I say that as a doctor, I say that as a mother. Um, but I think at the end of the day, what I find soulless in is saying to myself, I made the best decision possible given the information that I had at that time. I'm not saying that I've never made a mistake as a doctor. I think it would be foolish and very egotistical of me to say that I am incapable. And I'm a parent, 100%, I will say that I made mistakes. I'm 100% likely to make them again. But I can look my children in the eyes and I can say, mommy, try your best. And what I'm asking this evening of everybody here is to try your best. Yes, the law is saying that maybe it is illegal for the school board to mandate masks. But that is the law. That is lawyers. When you bring your child into a hospital and you ask me to care for your child, I don't turn around and say, hold on, let me ask my lawyer. I look at my colleagues and I say, what does the medicine tell me? What does the statistics tell me? I don't base my healthcare decision on what the law tells me. Yes, it may guide me in certain situations, but at the end of the day, I have to use my own knowledge, my own judgment, and the people around me who are other, otherwise experts in the field, I am not. We all have our own opinions. We all have our very strong opinions. But I highly doubt that anybody's true group decisions and opinions are going to change this evening. All I'm asking is that we as a community, we as parents, we as caregivers, we as healthcare professionals, we as daughters, sons, um, I mean, I live with my in-laws. I take their risks with me. It is something that I might every day want to apologize. But let's just do the best we can and have a safe holiday. And I think that's what we all need right now.
Good evening. Welcome to the board of September 9th. I, I just want to get a few things straight. I heard quite a few comments and I only have three minutes, so it's going to be probably just quick. No matter how many times someone mentions hospital beds and COVID deaths, let's get one thing straight. There is no correlation to children wearing masks in school and people dying of COVID. I've never seen that study and that's not what we're talking about here. So what the prime school board did was not science. What I wanted to men- What I wanted to mention was a CDC, an article in The Atlantic by David Siewick, it's on CDC's flawed case of wearing masks in school. The agency's director has said repeatedly that schools without mask mandates have tripled the risk of COVID outbreaks. That claim is based on very shaky science according to this article. Now, tonight we heard somebody bring up this exact same article, saying that this is the reason why, you know, kids need to be wearing masks. This is proof that that article was taken out of context and false, and this is why we're getting into a lot of trouble these days with this false information. The WHO does not recommend masks for children under age six. The European Union recommends against the use of masks for any children in primary school. However, our CDC relatively holds a stance for all kids two and older should be masked in school. The agency has argued for this policy even though the atmosphere is persistent backlash and skepticism. And September twenty-sixth, the director of the CDC, Rachel Walensky, marched out her studying new statistic that somebody mentioned tonight citing a study published two days earlier which looked at data from one thousand public schools in Arizona. The ones that didn't have mask mandates, she said, were three and a half times as likely to experience COVID outbreaks as the ones that did. That's more, that's just a simple manipulation. This estimate's far bigger than any other research or literature at the time. On September twenty-eighth, she can use that study, the White House bring up the three and a half multiplier. She even tweeted it out and used it a couple more times than October. But the Arizona study, the center of the CDC's back to school blitz turns out that would have been profoundly misleading. You can't learn anything about the effects of school mask mandates on this study according to Jonathan Ketchum, he's a public health economist at the Arizona State University. His view equity assessment of eight other experts who reviewed the research and with whom this David Siewick spoke with. The data being touted by the CDC would show the dramatic increase, tripling of risk of unmasked students often excluded from this debate, he said. The Arizona studies lead authors to stand by their work and, but, and then of course the CDC does as well. But the critics were forthright in their harsh assessments, he says. Noah Haber is an interdisciplinary scientist and co-author of the systematic review of COVID-19 mitigation policies. Called the research so unreliable that probably should not have been entered into the public discourse. This is the misinformation from our government that these distrust.
Your other time.
So, so the whole point is, you know, how are we supposed to be trusting, how is anybody going to be trusting, how are they going to trust if you have to say when we have our government and people like that coming out with these false studies and then quoting them? So, within closing...
Thank you, you're close up.
I just wanted to mention that with the vaccines, November twenty-second, if you have your...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Tim Curry.
Hello, my name's Tim Curry, I used to be a teacher in Allen Town. I went shopping today and I found this. A harbor exposure assessment scientist said that he compares masking to a layer of prevention like Swiss cheese. Each one of these layers might have a hole in it. So this might be vaccine, this might be masking, stuff can still get through, distancing. The idea is that you have layers, none of them perfect, but the more layers you have, the better chance of lowering the risk. I don't think we should be talking about taking away layers right now. Next, is my first grade back, Rich. Right now I feel that Rich is Omicron and Delta, it's stealing my presence. I want to take my daughter to Pittsburgh to see an NHL game, January second. That might not happen, NHL is taking away possibly that game. My wife, who works very hard in an ER, don't tell her, but I want to surprise her with a church bus trip to Broadway at the end of January. Broadway's taking away those trips. Rich is taking away my presence. But I'm okay with it because those organizations are doing things to keep us safer. On the other hand, tonight, I'm hearing something that's going to make us less safe. My wife works hard in the ER, she's called the machine in St. Luke's downtown in the ER. She prides herself on getting patients, taking care of them out. She came home very disappointed the other day because at seven AM there were twenty people waiting in the ER at the end of her shift. Masks work, I'm a teacher, I was a teacher. The gold standard is randomized testing. The people that did the biggest study on that said this really should have ended the debate, but here we are. Infectious Disease Society of America, the people that represent the people that are the experts, say mask in schools. Dr. Jari, the infectious disease chief at St. Luke's, on Omicron, said, don't panic, take actions, do the things we know that work. What is that? In August, he said, it's not the bait hole, masks work. Comparing the hazards and benefits, no questions, masks are the things to do. I drove here on the right side of the road to this meeting, even if I felt those lines in the middle were restricted. I would tell my first graders at the start of the year coming up with rules, rules are so that we don't get hurt and other people don't get hurt. Elections matter, votes matter. Tonight, ten local physicians to zero have spoken about masking. Sorry. Four weeks ago, we came up with a decision. What is the urgent health safety data that came out in the last four weeks? Lastly, functionality. If you don't, if we could predict your vote before you take the vote, after listening to ten experts, I'm afraid of what message that sends to the people who are speaking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make the motion that masks become optional, suggested but optional starting tomorrow at your school.
A second, I do.
Okay, second for discussion, comment. Could we, could we, Dr. Mann, did you say something perhaps for, I forget if it was David Mann or Dr. Mann?
Perfect. Thank you, thank you. Unless state and federal government authorize otherwise.
I had a couple, or is it open for discussion?
It is.
I just had a couple of quick points to make. We had, over the last couple of days, we have had an enormous amount of emails from the community. It's great to see people so engaged. But of those emails, a ton of them were from doctors, just like all the doctors that came here to speak tonight. So far, in my personal experience, I have heard from two doctors that don't agree with making masking mandated. One of them here, but we take our children to them, we take our parents, grandparents, everything to these doctors, and we expect them to perform miracles because they know how to do their jobs. And I don't know what, what we're doing questioning that and who we think that we are, how do we think that we know better than these people that we trust to know the medical facts? And every one of them is telling us, put your mask on. I keep hearing people talk about other districts that went mask optional. And the two of them in the last couple of days, they're slowly starting to falter and break down. Now it's back to full mask or mask optional. That isn't just that masks mandated now, they're totally virtual. I don't want to be virtual. Sports, the sports go away, they all go away if we end up going virtual. And my kids play sports, I think most of our kids play sports, they go away if we end up having to go virtual. Again, I don't want to be virtual. I thought the idea was schools not screening. This is kind of cut and dry to me, I don't, I agree with what Mr. Dimick said before, I think that we should wait until the eleventh as we originally planned, let's get through the holiday, let's get through the week after, kids come back from the holiday, let's see what happens with that. Maybe there will be an explosion of cases, maybe there won't. And if there is an explosion of cases, that's why our meeting is on the tenth, if we need to discuss it, we can. If we don't need to discuss it, we don't have to, and it goes away on the eleventh. But let's stick with the original plan because it was a good plan and it got us through the holiday surge. That's all.
So I would just like to comment. This guy's really built my name into the mix as far as a physician who has really tried to look at the science objectively. I think I could wipe out every healthcare worker sitting here tonight. I work, worked with many of you. I'll be honest with you, if you heard my disclaimer from the very beginning, healthcare workers are afraid to speak up. They really are, they're afraid of the jobs, they're afraid of being gaslit, and it's actually happening. So that's why I had that disclaimer, I appreciate the support that my employer has given me to speak freely, but I'm not speaking for them, that's clear. When it comes to the science, first of all, to question science is science, that's the definition. It's important that we question these studies. So somebody had mentioned that the Arizona study that Dr. Walensky from the CDC has quoted has shown and proven that masks are three times more effective, where there's a higher incidence of outbreaks, by three and a half fold. That study would not make it to any peer reviewed journal. So for all my physician colleagues out there, look at that study. First of all, it's published by the CDC's own journal. A lot of very much smarter doctors than I am have torn that study apart. So that was in Arizona, they start school early, they look at, they compare two different towns, and they look at a six week time period. So a large, a huge percentage of those schools did not start until three weeks into when that study started. So it could very well be stated that those schools who had mask mandates, maybe they started later. Also, because of the mask mandate, they weren't testing these kids. So all the close contacts, because they were masked, who were wearing masks, based on CDC guidance, they were not considered close contact and they were not tested. So you're testing kids who were in mask optional schools more frequently than testing kids who were in mask mandatory schools. It's apparently flawed and has a, it's called a detection box, a pretty significant detection box. So I think somebody, I think a speaker spoke to that. That, that, that study really should not be part of the conversation. There, there are studies however, which do show that masks work. I am not going to argue that masks do not have a benefit, because I think they do. The largest study was performed, a random clustered randomized control trial, I think somebody had mentioned that that is the grandeur of research, was performed in Bangladesh, in communities. Now this was not children, this was adults. And it showed that there was a significant difference with masking in the community. The difference was eleven percent, not, not three hundred and fifty percent, eleven percent. And that was with a surgical mask. Off masks had a five percent difference. So that is the randomized control trial that showed that masks work. Five percent to eleven percent. And that's in families, now that's adults. But interestingly, in that study, if you look at it, that, that, that eleven percent and five percent were overall, it was more effective with the older, less effective with younger. But these were just adults. So it is hard to make that correlation, but I think you could make that jump, and I think that's what we've done. I think masks do have an effect. I just question how significant of an effect that is. And I think it's okay to do, it's okay to question. It really is. It really is.
So I...
Hang on, one thing I forgot to add on to my thing, my little speech, and then you can add. I will also say that of all of the emails that we received, the very few students that we heard from were all asking for a masking mandate, and the very few teachers that emailed were all asking for a masking mandate. So the only people that we've heard from, from our students and our teachers, have all been for a masking mandate.
So I just wanted to make one other comment to follow up about our healthcare providers, who are really doing, working, working overtime. I myself took care of a pregnant woman with COVID all this week, saw her every day. I was masked up in an N95, a face mask, gloves, gown. So, you know, the quality of the mask does make a difference for both the wearer and the recipient. I think as physicians, we have to be careful because we have a bias, so we have to understand our biases. What we see every day as an ER physician, as a critical care physician, I know what you say and what you're talking. And so I think just recognizing that bias is important when talking to the community. We have to be very careful, I think we're losing some of our community. I take care of women during pregnancy, it's a very vaccine hesitant population. Part of it is our messaging, part of it is fear among, quite frankly. But I think we have to be careful and look at the data on students, on children, look at the age groups that we're talking about, that we as a board have to make decisions about.
So, what I would ask, really, especially including you as a fellow medical colleague, is your timing. Data can always, you can always look at studies and find flaws, you know, the best studies are randomized controlled trials and it is difficult to find those right now with the disease that's still relatively new, especially as it continues to evolve. You have local data that tells you the transmission rate right now is very high. There are a lot of people getting COVID right now. That you can't argue with, right? That's not a trial, that's just factual. And we have internal data that supports masking in a way, although we have not done a formalized experiment. You can see that the ones that are getting sick in our schools are getting sick because of contacts, external school. They are not getting the disease from their classmates within school. I know the point has been made that we are not masking, you know, at small get togethers and kids are getting together and we're in grocery stores, yeah, I know, that's why the rates are going up. I do still choose to mask in grocery stores, and I think my kids do it too, and they get it, they don't like it, but they get it. And, you know, I just, there is bias, of course. However, I am looking at information that is rather black and white, in that we have numbers that are spiraling out of control. It, it's not about fear, I don't, I, I... It, it's not about fear, I don't, I, I still live my life, my children are participating in activities um, because I know it's better for them to be active, it's better for us not to all be sitting in the house and be driving children crazy. But the timing, you, you, you want to make the, you want to pass a motion to get rid of masking at the end of school tomorrow? So essentially you are basically changing the mask mandate for five educational days. What, at possibly one of the worst times in our community that we've seen in a year. Why, what does that mean? What I see is, and honestly, this is the appearance, I mean, I feel like you, on the one hand, you talk about trying to do what's best for the community, but quite frankly, the day after you were officially certified by the county, the next day you called for this emergency meeting. You didn't look at data, you just were waiting to take this, take it off. You, you wanted to get rid of masks and you want, then that's the thing, this is becoming so politicized. Most physicians tend to be conservative and they vote Republican. But yet they're all telling you to mask. So it's not about party, but the decision is rather politicized. One other issue I wanted to bring up, and I know of one of the comments, visitor comments right above and I figured I would bring it up during discussion. What about our teachers and our staff and our administrators? If you take away masks, you are putting them all at risk. The deal is, right now, people who are getting sick with COVID are either unvaccinated, and that's more the young and healthy, but the ones that are vaccinated that are ending up in the hospital and dying are the ones that are vaccinated. And they are boosted, they have their boosters onboard, but unfortunately they're at the elderly, they're frail. The ones who have grave disease conditions and are already more vulnerable are the ones that are going to go down. So our teachers are older than our students. We already have talked about, and I'm frustrated by it too because I'm in the same situation. We have certain schools right now that are conducting study halls essentially in auditoriums because we already have a large number of staff that are out. Not all of them are of course going to be from COVID, but we have a large number of staff that are out. You start to get more staff members that are sick, even if they don't die, which apparently seems to be the criteria for doing things a certain way here, whether it be children or teachers, um, which I think is incorrect because we already know there's morbidity also associated with COVID, not just mortality. You're going to get STIRPs, you're going to have long COVID, never going to be the same, never play sport again, there's all kinds of bad effects from it. I, I just don't understand why we can put our teachers at greater risk now. I, I, you know, I'm finally tabling it till January the 11th, or the 10th when we have our meeting, because that would be in advance of that January 11th. But I, I'm tired of this back and forth, I think the entire community is tired of it, why not just tie it to a tier system? Parkland is still masking, they're tied to community levels. They, they follow the CDC thresholds of low, moderate, substantial high. We're, we're nowhere near the low for moderate, so we can certainly talk about maybe moderate being something to move towards. Other districts are using their internal case data to tier the masking. I, I just, you know, I hear about the, the school districts that have gone to mask optional, but there are certainly plenty that are still mask mandated. When it comes to the law, my understanding is that the Supreme Court ruled that a non-elected official, such as the, the Health Secretary, could not make decisions the way she did so because she didn't follow the correct process. They didn't rule that school boards couldn't make the decision. They in fact are encouraging locals, local decision making because you want to use local data. We shouldn't be operating on the basis of what's happening in Allegheny County because it doesn't directly impact our community or our children.
Do you mind just, probably one thing, because you had said that the majority of patients in the hospital are vaccinated who stay, who stay and
I understand the theory, I said those that are
That's what you said.
That now, I said a combination of those that are unvaccinated, those are tend to be the younger and healthy patients, right? And the ones that are vaccinated tend to be the elderly ones.
Yeah, when you're talking about the teachers, who I very much appreciate what, what all of our teachers do. Thankfully, they have had an opportunity, not only to be vaccinated, but likely to be boosted. And I certainly hope that most have chosen that. But so we all, you know, they've had that choice to, to protect themselves. And I think it's important just to let the community know that when you are vaccinated, certainly as an adult, you significantly reduce your risk of, of significant COVID. Not maybe, you know, you still may get, still may test positive, you significantly reduced your risk.
So what's the acceptable level of risk for our teachers?
So I think that's, I think that's a choice.
For who? But the teachers aren't the ones that may be the choice, you are.
The acceptable level of, of risk for everyone, for parents, for students, parents making a choice, for children, and for adults.
Kids versus adults are impacted differently directly by the disease, there's clearly the indirect impact. But what do you do? The teachers could mask all they want, they could boost all they want. But right now variants are proving themselves to be more transmissible even in the setting of vaccination. So why would you take a mask, they may not prevent the transmission entirely, but why would you take away a layer of protection for them? Why would you put more teachers at risk for getting sick? And they may not end up in the hospital for us, but even if they get sick, they have to go home if they test positive. And then who's going to teach our kids who are now happily in their mask optional status in their classrooms, but now sitting in an auditorium even more often doing word service? How is this going to make it better? Like, I guess the quarantine thing, we'll talk about that. But you tell me how taking away a mask now of all time is going to help. It may not help as
I think it's going to hopefully help their education.
How is their education by a mask?
It will help their education.
How is a mask impacting your child's education? I want to know, you can't just say it, I want to know how.
So, I think, my, I think on that issue, I could, I mean, that's one of my concerns. I'm, I'm pretty convinced that it does have quite an impact on the education of, especially some of our youngest students. You know, I stood on the top of my head for about a year and said, not sending kids to school was an exceedingly bad idea. I didn't have any data to that, right? Wasn't, wasn't any research, but I just sort of a little bit of common sense there told me, you know, out in town with some of the most vulnerable kids, completely shut down their school system for a year. You know, that, they're not going to recover from that four years, if ever. That, that, that has changed the course of those young kids' lives forever. And I sat there and I said as much, cause Lou in the face. And I have to say, a number of the same organizations and folks who now say, we got to keep kids in school, uh, so these masks have to keep kids in school, where I believe many of the same folks, experts and others, because they didn't have all the data either, and I'm sure they, all these people are well intentioned. But the reality is, you know, I don't think that was the right choice, and it's, and it's Dr. Wayout's point. Some of this is that you can't be critical of anything anymore. No, we need to be, we have to question. I'm not an expert and I, I value everybody here tonight, I do, because I, I don't have that expertise and I'm listening intently to what they're saying. But we do have to question, and on this issue, come back and see me in about two or three years and ask me about non-verbal learning amongst the youngest students. I, I, I just had to a rather important homicide case that involved a, a young lady. And, and one of the defenses for her was a non-verbal learning disorder. I listened to probably the premier person, uh, doctor on that position from Yale, for about three days testified for the second time. And I had to do research and again, I'm not an expert here, but I, I think I became somewhat, you got to kind of learn some of this stuff so you can cross it out. So I have some idea of the impact of children not being able to see the entire face. And for our kindergartners now on year two, or our first graders on year two, to not see teachers and their peers in school, I'm telling you that, that has to have an impact, I believe that. Now, again, it's just an impact, I'm not saying it means anything, other than though, I only raise it because in my mind, it's something that needs to be weighed. It's a real cost and there's other costs I'm asking, but that's the main one when it comes to education that I have a great concern. Again, I don't have the data, the point, the point two to say anything about it, but I, I do think we need to be careful about that. I think it impacts reading and literacy. Again, do I have data to support that? I do not. Uh, but I suspect if you can't see the movement of a mouth, which is I believe, you know, generally the way the youngest people learn, uh, it, it has an impact. And I suspect we're going to find in our youngest student populations across this country uh, an impact from masking on, on, and maybe they'll be able to recover from it, you know? And I agree that, you know, that, that kids themselves, you know, perhaps feel pretty comfortable wearing a mask, but they don't know what it is they may be missing. And so I do think we should be careful in, in thinking that there's no cost, that there's just no cost to asking children to mask. I, I suspect there's actually a pretty significant cost to our youngest students. Again, doesn't mean you do or don't mask, but I, I think we need to be very careful and consider, uh, consider those points. On that one issue, I just wanted to speak up about that, because I feel, I feel pretty strong about that one issue.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, Jeff, that's why I thought we had had, I mean, I mean, you weren't with us through the whole pandemic, Dr. Mann, but my understanding was that we did have clear masks available for that reason. And certainly they are widely available as well for that very reason, so that you don't impede the development of children when it comes to speech. I mean, I, that's, I agree that there are clearly some downsides to wearing a mask. I know, I do wonder what five days of, of masking is going to do.
Well, I'm not advocating that, but I'm not, you're wrong, I'm not advocating, I'm not going to vote tonight to, to just be clear, I'll, I'll state my reason for that. But I, on that one issue, I feel, you know, I look at a judge, you know, for my living, I got to look at juries and judges, right? And I had this own experiment of my own mind. Uh, I sit there and I now look to see in my, usually I don't have much of an effect. Like I'm looking at you right now, I don't think I'm having much of an effect, actually. But my point is, I look to you to try to figure out, am I convincing this person or not? And I can't tell anymore, I can't tell, I know most of you don't listen to me, but I can't tell whether you are or not right now. My point is, it is, I, I got to say, from my own life experience having to use this thing in court, it is very difficult to tell what impact I'm having on anybody because I can't read anything on anybody's face other than their eyes and I don't know what they're saying to me.
I agree with that, I think we all have gotten better at reading cues, you know, from people when it comes to their eyes. Look, I'm not saying that this is a great thing, we're going to mask, but I certainly have in what I do with respect to my practice in medicine, but I also see patients every day. And I tell you, um, you know, since it's been brought up, I shouldn't like go get into it, but my most, the most difficult part for me has been earlier in the pandemic when I, you know, I diagnosed a woman with breast cancer, that's what I do. So having to tell a woman that she has cancer and that she can't have, that I can't tell her when she's going to have surgery. I used to be, you know, I can usually give a ballpark because I know the situation, that was very hard and it was like that for a while. Because, you know, what, they don't consider that to be elective, I question how could that be considered elective? So it just, the impact that we do, that we have as board members on our community, I think is significant. You know, when it comes to children and masking, I know there's obviously some downsides that you mentioned, but I feel like in, in general, whenever it comes to anything, you look at risk versus benefit and you look at the, you kind of make a column of positives and negatives and you, that's how I kind of approach most decisions in life. And I think that's hopefully a pretty reasonable approach, right? You look at the good and the bad. I just, I think that if tying it to community rates is valid, if, if the majority disagrees with that, that's okay, but it could be at least wait until we see what we have at January 11th because to take it
Can I ask a question about tying it to community rates? Are you talking about the Southern Lehigh specific district rates or are you talking about Lehigh County or are you talking about?
So in the past, that was always very difficult to get questioned. So it's not accurate to just look at Lehigh County as you're mentioning, right? Because, and when our former Assistant Superintendent did a great job, and I know our new one will do the same, you look at the breakdown by zip codes. You know, there is still some overlap, it's not perfect, but you look at zip codes that correspond to our district and that, that's actually the data we use when we were making decisions all year, although and people don't recognize that that's what we were doing, but we were actually trying to base it on fact, not just the beliefs. And just, so I'm clear too, I don't believe I'm an expert in this at all, I'm not, I'm not frontline. I have loved ones that are, and I see the toll that it's taking and, you know, it, it's, it's you know, you don't want it to be your friend's grandparents or your friend's parents or, anyway.
How, how is wearing a mask reducing the stress for the frontline worker?
Because less people will get sick and end up in the hospital.
But Dr. Wayout just pointed to some studies that showed that the effect of masking was very minimal in terms of folks getting sick.
He said that, he said that the one from Arizona maybe was flawed, which said that masking was helpful, so he just called that one flawed, which I understand what you're saying.
He should have
But he cited an article, correct.
Five to 11%.
Positive with that.
Correct, oh yeah.
That, I'm just declining it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's in community, that's in adults.
Look, infectious disease has come, I actually, when this all started, I, I wanted to know more about masks. I didn't know, because I, we wear them in healthcare, I didn't have to wear them all the time, but I always wore them during procedures because it's basic infection control, so I asked about it. It, it's been evolving over time with studies like you mentioned from the one in Bangladesh. But it's known to reduce the transmission because it's a physical barrier. It's a physical barrier. Obviously, if you're talking really close to people and you're not wearing the mask correctly, which people said, yeah, obviously that reduces the effectiveness, but it just because if you don't do it right, it's not as good, doesn't mean you don't have it at all.
I, I also have another question for the doctors. It's not, we're in a different place today than we were 12 and 18 months ago, correct? We have vaccines, we didn't have vaccines last year. We have therapeutics. We did not have last year. Which, if I understand the data correctly, they're pretty effective at reducing the impact of COVID to the individual and hospitalization rates.
But if you can't get a hospital bed to get that therapeutic, it's going to be a problem. Right, that's the thing.
I understand, but I'm also a little concerned about what's causing the impact on hospitals. We know we've got crises in every organization.
Because people aren't wearing masks anymore and everything.
Let me finish talking, so we, we have crises in every organization with short staffing. Okay, and those, those short staff, staffing issues aren't just caused by COVID and infectious disease, they're caused by people retired or who are leaving or changing professions, correct? So I'm not sure organization was happening in hospitals is really related to COVID. I realize the staff are stressed and they're doing amazing jobs. Why am I in there, I, I really respect
So let me answer your question then. So you have to look at direct and indirect effects, right? So yes, not all of our staff in shortages caused by COVID, that's true. But if you have more people go out with COVID because you're not masking as much because there's more transmission in the classroom, then you made it worse. When it comes to hospitalizations, the problem is, there's a surge right now in unvaccinated patients hitting the ER. So yeah, we have things available, but if not enough people take advantage of those opportunities, it has an impact. That, you know, that surge will come down and then you'll have more of an opportunity to have those therapeutics in a bed, you know what I mean? Like right now, you can't get a bed, people are sleeping in the ER for days because there are no beds on the floor. And then when there's no beds in the ER because there's no beds in the hospital, then there's no bed, no place for you to go for your emergency care either, so it kind of trickles forward. Yes, we do have mechanisms now happily and thankfully, but it's not going to work if not enough people in your population take advantage of it and unfortunately have variants that are now being transmitted and there's a lot of breakthrough cases. You probably haven't had enough to be, the boosted population in our area is not enough to combat it yet, right? So you get the bump after the holidays, and that's the thing about
I, I, I would guess what I'm concerned about is the bump after every holiday, which has been happening since COVID started. I'd also like to understand, because I knew, you tied the Um, I'd also like to understand, because I knew, you tied, um, the case rates to the zip codes, that's how you count it. How did you set the thresholds for, um, intervention? Was it a percentage of the population?
The CDC.
Use the C, CDC guidelines. Has anybody used any other guidelines besides the CDC?
Well, the CDC sets guidelines on the basis of number for 100,000 PCR positivity rates, right? So you go by that. Others, more recently, are starting to look at their own case rates in their own school district. And then they go to advanced mitigation, you know, as necessary, kind of similar to what .
Shouldn't we be looking though to hospitals? I think, I think if you're gonna look at tiered systems, I mean, clearly our tiered systems, I don't think worked well in the past because the masks have remained for two years, and we know during those times, looking back on them, they weren't necessary. And my theory is correct on nonverbal learning, you know, we should have taken those opportunities when we had them potentially, but because the tiered systems suggested by the CDC were so low that we never reached them. Um, and my understanding coming out of the White House, even this current White House, is the messaging now is not to, we like, you know, look at case counts, uh, but to look at the severity of the disease itself and hospitalizations. And so if we're gonna look at tier, I mean, I mean, look, it looks to me like with the Omicron, right? We're about to see all kinds of case counts. Now, the question is, uh, you know, hospitalization, I mean, that, that's what it seems like I'm getting from the doctors that have spoken here tonight, and I don't know if they're worried about the kids that's at home and confined because they have Omicron, they, they're worried about an overflow at the hospital. So again, shouldn't that be our goal to a tiered system if that's what we're, and I'm not necessarily in favor of tiered system, but I, the tiered system, as it's been designed in my mind, just from experiencing it now for two years, it didn't work. I mean, the, the one that we used, in my mind, did not work. It kept everybody in masks, and I can look back on periods of time when, you know, I think we can all agree, we probably had no business probably being masked. Uh, and the problem is, when you use a sledgehammer, a probe slug net, then when we actually need people to be masked, and we've told them to be masked for two straight years, then people have had enough. And so it needs to be much more targeted, and I don't think we've had that in the past. And that's my concern about the tiering, if the tiering just results in everybody being masked because we're counting counts, and it never reaches a point where people can unmask, then what's the point of a tiering system? Because that's what it's been for this school district when we used it.
So I'm not sure what you mean when you say it didn't work. I mean, we did get rid of masks in the summer, which was really exciting.
I'm talking about.
I was really excited. But, um, I, I mean, what I was suggesting, I mean, the problem is, I think, just coming up with our own tiered system according to hospitalizations, I mean, since you brought it up, hospitalizations are going up quite a lot. Um, if you look at the numbers, they are now analogous to where they were in December of last year. So if you wanna use that, fine, then we should keep masking. But, I, I mean, I think the reason that the CDC setup is good is that it is an accepted, um, threshold system. Now, I think that you could probably argue that, okay, in the past, I think we said, oh, we should probably be in low before we remove masks, but now maybe, you know, I would think that maybe low and moderate, at least we should start to accept, um, masking being optional. But I think substantial and high should remain with masking, just because they are on the higher level of, I think that you just adjust where we fall within that tiered system, I, you know, to your point, since they're great. I mean, when rates come down, I think there's less concern overall because you don't have as many cases in the community that could be transmitted at school, right? Like, that, that's, that's the, that's the purpose of tying it to community transmission, because our kids don't live in a vacuum, right? Schools aren't a vacuum, so it makes sense that if more kids, if more kids are being exposed to COVID, that they could bring it into the schools as well, right? So I think that's when you have to have more mitigation in, in place, so I'll just answer your question.
We heard from two different kinds of experts tonight. Well, not just two, we heard from many, many different kinds of experts tonight. We heard from medical doctors, we heard from mental health experts, we also heard from teachers, and they are experts. And we, what we heard teachers say is, this is not an issue, we can handle this. Kids thrive on speaking as an educator, kids thrive on consistency, they thrive on knowing what their expectations are and knowing that, that, that what is expected of them on a consistent basis. They thrive, one of the things that teachers look at is transitions during a day, that includes the individuals people see. That's why we don't have kindergarteners for past classes, it's too many different transitions for a kid in a day. So we heard from teachers and experts, and it would have been really nice for us to have been able to bounce these ideas that we're hearing tonight, that we're setting policy on, off of our educational experts before we, as a board, before we're sticking to a decision. That's why I still think we have the opportunity to say, everything that I've heard everyone talk about tonight, including Ms. King, who said effective after school, including all of this, is give us time to wait and plan effectively. The overwhelming question I'm hearing is, why now? Um, if we have staff members out for various reasons, there's a substitute shortage in this state and across the country, there are fewer individuals going into education and into administration and into superintendency than ever before, um, I think we can all have experienced firsthand why that might be the case, and why this might not be as alluring as healing as it once was. But we need those experts, those teachers, those administrators, those staff members in our building, and they're in short supply. If we remove these masks now, let's, let's discount COVID for a second. When was the last time you had a cold? When was the last time we had the flu? We didn't have a flu surge last year because of the mitigation that was in place. If we remove these masks, we are going to see an increased incidence of virus and illness and sickness. Folks are going to be symptomatic, and as soon as they're symptomatic, we're gonna have to ask, get this COVID. And teachers, for the sake of their students, for the sake of their families, are going to have to stay home. Teachers are going to get sick, we already have a shortage due to other circumstances. Teachers who have a, a, a sprained body part that is in need of, maybe not immediate surgery, are going to have to be delayed and stay at home and not be in our classroom. There are so many reasons why now is being questioned. I would like to ask that we extend this conversation, as Mr. Dimm suggested, let's keep those expectations, let's give those kids, let's give our classrooms the same standard predictable expectations and be able to plan for this. Let's be able to take the information and the wonderful ideas, the great ideas we're hearing tonight, but we aren't able to, because this is a business meeting, talk to those experts. Those experts, they have not heard this, they could not weigh in. There's some things on here that I have questions about, how would a teacher do that? If we tweak that sentence or that.
Emily, do you mind if I just?
No, wait, no, no, I, I was quiet for a really long time, I was quiet for a really long time, I, you know, it's in a row. No, no, I am on point, we are talking about masking. So I would ask that we consider delaying this conversation until the 10th, so that we can examine this. I would ask that, as we are looking at the effects of language development and learning, we also ask and consider studies that include, that yes, this is an impediment to language development, but kids who can't see anything still learn to speak and, and learn. There are studies currently that say that while this does have an effect on language learners and early language learners, the unmasked time they spend in their day outside of the classroom, interacting with peers unmasked outside in extracurriculars, which potentially should definitely do this, and interacting unmasked with families in their homes, there are studies that say that that compensates for this. And the consistency of a teacher and an expert consistently, not a substitute, not a rotating role of folks, consistency will counteract the negative effects of this. And this will be on shortly. If we all treat each other in a way that says that we hear each other, we appreciate what you're, what you're, and let's come together and let's find something that we can all know is a well-planned, executed, anticipated plan of action for masking. And I would ask that we then stick with the January 11th implementation of a new chain. Um, and I would ask that we continue to consult with each other and not tax our teachers and not tax our staff over their Christmas breaks to come up with this. Because if we enact this now, they're working through Christmas to figure this out. They're working through Christmas to figure out what this means and how to implement it, because it's going to affect the day they get back. But if we wait until the 11th, they can come back and they can plan and they get the break they deserve. And so I'm asking us to please pause for those five words.
So before we stop, what do they have to figure out how to implement with mask optional? I'm curious as to.
They have to figure out how to navigate a classroom in which some kids are gonna be masked and some kids are not gonna be masked. They have to figure out how to contact trace if someone is. We have everything set up now, all of our procedures are set up so that if, because assuming they're masked, they have to figure out that anew when it doesn't apply to masking. And they have to figure out, what are we gonna do about the division between some kids are masked and some kids aren't? What are we gonna do about explaining that in a, in an elementary level? What are we gonna do about contact tracing it at an upper level? And I was also referring to not just masking, but the next item on our list is quarantine. How do you identify, you know, kids walking down a hall that should be masked because of the, the, the new quarantine guidance? What?
For them to figure out the masking and how they routinely tell them to pull up?
We did.
And those and everything, we did.
We absolutely did. We met time and time again as a community, we had open town halls throughout the entire summer before school went back into session.
Well, the state, the state came out on August 31st and mandated masking, and that was what people had to respond to.
But the.
But they didn't have, to Bill's point, it's not like they had, you know, little of time to react yet, that, that's how that all occurred.
Okay, fine.
It was over masking.
Fine, but masking, but we're gonna be talking about quarantining then. We're gonna be talking about quarantining.
Yeah, because what you're talking about was back in 2020, when we were trying to get back into school. That's a totally different situation than what we've been under this year. And when we were essentially many districts, and why the governor did what he did, there were like eighty-some districts out of almost 500 that were going to go to a mask policy. The rest were going mask optional, and that wasn't sitting right. So they couldn't dictate out to do another mandate, which now got repealed. There was no time, it was like figure it out, just do it.
So I have a question, um, just because I feel like this could keep up, but, um, what, so when we talk about education and our kids being in school and in the classroom and how important it is to all of us, it just, I'm curious to know, um, have you thought about the children whose parents are more fearful, um, especially if masking goes away? Have you thought about how they thought they had until January 11th potentially to unfortunately pull their kids out of school, um, into a remote learning channel? In addition, you have to also remember the other option available to parents is charter schools. So just remember that there is an economic impact of that, and there are families that we also represent, right, um, as, as board members, um, who may not feel comfortable sending their kids to school in this situation. And do we just not care about them because it's their personal choice? I mean, if it is.
So I, I, no, to answer your question.
No, I'm not done asking it yet. I'm not done asking you, I'm still speaking.
Ask the question.
I'm not done speaking. So I'll let, I'll take a good pause when I'm done.
This is, you interrupt.
I don't interrupt him, he's.
You constantly.
Our, our, our. Let's, let's.
All parents also have the right to send their child to school in a safe learning environment. And I do feel it is up to us to try to create that, whether it be with masks, because that right now is an accepted mitigation method for COVID. Um, there are other safety things that we undertake as, as a part of our, um, process in schools that maybe not everyone is going to agree with, but we do it in order to keep them safe. I just, I just don't understand why we would do this now.
So, yes, I have thought about everything that you just asked, and it goes both ways, quite frankly. If you read some of the emails that came to us, parents have been expressing, if they'd known back in August what they were gonna be dealing with educationally, they would have pulled their kids and put them in charter school. Or they would have sent them to a private school because they didn't want their child in a mask, they would have done that. We got a surprise because of the state. I've also thought about what parents may do is we go mask optional. And I've been very clear, I don't think that we have the right or any law that we can act on that gives us the right to mandate a mask, and I've been very clear. But that said, it goes both ways. Parents on both sides of this have a choice and should be and can be informed to make the decision that's best for their kids. That includes wearing a mask or not. That's something that they should have the right to decide. And it's not up to us, it's not up to anyone to dictate that to them for a 5% reduction in the virus transmissibility.
But the problem is.
When you're losing everything that you gain educationally by not having this on. And there are plenty of pieces out there that go to nonverbal on how kids learn and how they communicate and how they build trust that has been damaged for two years.
The problem is that, I said it before, and I'll say it again, and probably not continue to, but, but the problem is, one parent's decision whether or not to mask their child impacts another parent's child, right? Like, that's the thing, right? If, if I could just, if I could control what happens to my child entirely by whether or not I put a mask on them, this would be a moot point, I wouldn't care, no one should care, right? Like, the problem is, a mask being worn by an individual doesn't protect them as much as when somebody close to them is wearing one, or in the same room, sharing the same air for eight hours, two to 10 hours.
Answer this question for me that I've wondered for two years. Why do you do things like masking of a healthy, a healthy individual? Why would you do that?
Because you transmit disease.
If I'm healthy?
Yes, because COVID-positive kids have higher, can have higher viral loads than hospitalized adults. That has been proven in, I have read the emails, and many people have.
I'm talking about a healthy individual, no virus.
Someone who appears, someone who appears to be healthy, that's what asymptomatic means. Asymptomatic, asymptomatic.
You could test it.
COVID-positive kids. Asymptomatic means you think they're healthy by looking at them. Okay, so, but asymptomatic COVID-positive kids can have higher viral loads in them than hospitalized COVID-positive adults. But that's why I answered your question, you said, why mask a healthy kid? That's why.
No, I said, why would you mask? Why aren't we doing any of the things that we're doing to healthy individuals?
Because you can't tell they're healthy by looking at them. You can't tell a lot of things about people by looking at them.
Because you would become potentially unhealthy by getting the disease when you're not wearing a mask, it does protect you too.
I, I personally, I had COVID, and it was during the period where we were in the mask mandate in 2020. I don't honestly feel that having a mask on or not made any difference in me not COVID.
Um, it does, just because, it doesn't mean that it's 100%, that's why it's called mitigation. If something was 100%, that'd be awesome, but it's not. That's why it's called mitigation, and that's why you have to apply your mitigation. Masking isn't enough. You have.
I have a comment that you made earlier, that as therapeutics, so the monoclonal antibodies, people getting those or taking hospital beds, those are supposed to be used outpatient to prevent people from getting to the hospital.
No, no, you know, they're being administered in the ER in some cases.
And that, that would be great, but why are they not being used before people get to the ER?
I think that's my question, but unfortunately, they are, so they take up space.
Again, I ask, why are they not being used before?
But that's not up to us to decide, you think we're gonna decide why people aren't getting?
They are, they are being utilized for patients. When they're, they're, it depends, I think, it probably depends on the health, healthcare system and how they administer. You know, I think there was one thing Emily did say about experts, and I think you missed one big expert, which are the parents. You know, I, I feel really. Look, I, I read through every email, I sympathize honestly with both sides of the island. I find it hard to mandate a mitigation. I find it hard to mandate a mitigation strategy that can potentially adversely affect education. Look, we talked about the available data, kids are not vaccinated. Now we're talking about, you know, putting the burden of this now endemic virus on the children or the community. And I don't know if that's our place. I think it's something that we need to decide if necessarily that's our place. But we didn't mention vaccines. I mean, everyone has an opportunity now to do vaccine. So that's the protection, that's an added layer of protection that parents who have further concerns, which I understand, and that's okay, that they have for their children. And guess what? From a timeline's perspective, they've had an opportunity to be fully vaccinated. And the other concept of fully vaccinated, that's, that seems to be a moving goalpost that's likely going to change to maybe a third dose, maybe a fourth dose. So, you know, there's good data that suggests significant efficacy two weeks after one dose. So I think anyone who's had an opportunity, any of your children who have had an opportunity to get vaccinated, they probably have excellent efficacy by this point, if it's been at least two to three weeks.
Do you know what the problem? I, I thought the, the problem is transmission right now, right? Like, the disease, it likes to survive, right? So the new variant Omicron, we know it's transmitted pretty, pretty impressively, right? It's also transmitted pretty quickly amongst those that are also vaccinated. So in this case of like a few days when I first heard about it, and now it's gone from three percent of cases in Pennsylvania to seventy-five percent. So, again, I don't disagree with some of the points that have been made on the other side. I don't. And I've been very open with that. I, I do listen. It's just that, why would you do it when you have a new variant that's being transmitted at a higher rate than ever seen before amongst those that are also vaccinated?
Because there are therapeutics and vaccines, and things have changed in two years.
Do you think that those therapeutics are a hundred percent, MJ?
Nothing's a hundred percent.
Have you, no? So it's okay to infect a lot of people and then let's see what happens?
No, I'm not suggesting that. I think the world changes.
Yeah, the world's.
It is a moving target, and I think we need to adjust to that. Like, we need to relate in doing that.
I'll be quiet after this comment, at least I'll try. I, I am going to vote against this. I just want to put my reasons on, on the record for that, so people can understand that. I am persuaded by Dr. Way out of the point that at the end of the day for me, we got, I think we do need to find a way to get off a mandate for this to the kids. Because I think, as I look around society, as it, and maybe this is right or wrong, but the reality is, these mitigation strategies fall hardest currently, and they have for the last two years, on the kids of our community. And, and, you know, I walk, we all talk about, you know, it's like my kid goes to school and he's, and she's masked there the entire day, and then the rest of society cruises around, you know, the world pretty, I know there's certain jobs that that's not happening, but the reality is, there's no mask mandate in the state of Pennsylvania for people out and about. There's no, none of those things exist anymore. So, so at the end of the day, we've asked the people that are the least vulnerable to this disease and probably the most impacted by it, to bear the greatest, I, I, it's hard for me in history to think of a time when we've asked our youngest to bear the greatest cost, and we've done that for two years now. And I think we need, it's imperative that we begin to figure out how to end that. And I, and nobody's, so for me, that, that weighs heavily on, on what I'm thinking about. Now, having said that, as it pertains to this vote tonight, to Dr. Serene's point. Look, on November twenty second, we took a vote. It didn't exactly go the way I wanted, but at the end of the day, you know, the vote was had, and the people of this community were told, you know, you got, and the large reason for that was vaccines were becoming available to five and eleven-year-old group, and, you know, the timing of, of the spacing of those vaccinations, it would be hard pressed for people to get, if they wanted to, you know, children completely protected prior to January eleventh. And my understanding, the large reason for that date was for that reason. And, you know, I feel strongly that this board does need to provide notice and certainty in our policy decisions to the community. And lacking a completely compelling reason to change that, yeah, I, I believe, I'm, I'm not going to vote for this tonight because I, we told people that, and to some folks, you know, I have some real empathy for, for the people that, you know, that's going to cause people to freak out, quite frankly. And, and we're talking about the safety of their children, and, and I get on the other side, people said, look, but I've been wanting to do this forever too. I, I get, I get all sides here, but on this particular point, we've told people a date, or at least I was involved in a decision, where we told people a date. And I, I don't see the necessity over six days of schooling to change that date. Now, having said that, I think most people can tell, or at least from my comments here tonight, that on the tenth of November, when we meet again, it would be my expectation that, that, that the mask mandate be lifted, and maybe we try and figure out, is there some other things we look at there? Perhaps. But for me, it's two years. We've asked enough of our kids. I think it has an impact on them. And I believe on the tenth of, the eleventh of January, that's an appropriate time to strongly recommend to people to wear a mask and get vaccinated. But not to mandate, not to require. And it would be my hope that people will do the appropriate thing in that regard, given the risks that they can apply to their own situations. To Dr. Way out's point, you know, the ultimate expert here, as it pertains to any given child, is the parent of that child. They know best exactly what is in their best interest for that particular child. And I don't know that the school board can ever fully adopt the ability to know better. And I think it's a little arrogant of us to think that. So for that reason, I'm not voting tonight on it. But on January tenth, it's my expectation that we'll return those decisions back to the public in that regard. And perhaps we'll look at some additional plots within and around that, but I think it's, it's time. And that's, that's my thought on that, and I hope we can continue to have a civil discourse. I appreciate the folks coming out tonight. I think that's really important. And I think we have a civil discourse on this board. These are very difficult decisions. I appreciate the medical advice that have come here tonight, and, and the, our healthcare professionals that are obviously stressed and working. And I, I, I appreciate them very much. I just want to make that certainly clear. But it's not a medic, it's not purely a medical decision. It's a social and political decision. It is. It should be completely informed by medicine and others. But at the end of the day, it's a weighing of a whole lot of different variables out there that, that we as school board members elected here to represent the community have to listen to, think hard about, and do what we think is in the best interest of our community. And I think a mandate, a mandated mask for our kids, I think the time for me is shortly arriving for it to end, but I don't think it should end tonight for the reasons I've stated.
I have a, I have a quick question.
Kyle, can I just wait? I just want to clarify one thing. I just want to clarify that Mr. Dimick was aware of, you're right. When I said we heard from many experts tonight, you're right, we heard from parents and they are experts at fully masking. I, I apologize if that's not clear, because I do think parents are experts in what's best for this is. I said, we heard from many experts tonight. I meant to say if I did not, three of the types of experts we've heard from, and then I listed them, but I did not mean to discount, and I appreciate you pointing that out to me.
My question was actually for Nicole, since Nicole was the one to make the motion. I'm just honestly asking, why five more school days can't be given? Like, why the motion was made to stop this right away? Why can't this just wait those extra five school days?
And before you answer that, what Jeff just conveyed, and I voted against the mandate at that point because, again, we don't have the ability to do it. But I do agree with him that that was the date, I think in many parents' minds, that I think they knew, given the makeup of the board, that mask mandate was probably going to go away based on everything leading up to the election. And I think in fairness to all parents who were thinking that date, and granted, we may be, there will be some that are upset, but I think January eleventh is a fair date and gives more than enough time for everything to take place, for situations to be the best that it can be at that time. And that means choosing to vaccinate or not, or choosing to look at other alternatives or not, am I sort of? So with that in mind, I, I'd love to have Nicole answer the question just posed.
For the most part, I do believe that masking is political theater. I think a lot of the people that spoke in favor of masking today is very political in their direction. I know some of them personally. People ask why doctors didn't come forward that didn't believe in masking. I spoke to them. I've done my research. A good example is what happened to Chris. He came out and he said that he would like to remove the mask mandate. He was immediately tattled on to his HR department. He's been reported anonymously. I just don't feel that that's right. And I don't, I don't think anyone should have to put their job or their career on the line because you're against mask mandates. Do I think this mask is going to protect teachers and staff? A little bit, maybe in certain circumstances, but we were told when these masks came out, you're not supposed to touch them. You're not supposed, you're supposed to change them often. Dr. Wen, the CNN medical director, said, and I quote, "Clock masks are facial decorations." And a lot of kids that I've heard are coming in with the clock masks. So is that not, is that not going to work for them? Dr. Wen says it isn't. I normally would watch CNN, but I found that interesting. They have one study out on masking that CNN wanted, and Chris talked about it, but I just wanted to add on to that study. There was the study in Arizona that claimed by CNN, by the CDC, that it could prevent COVID three times. They didn't have any controls for community spread rates or vaccination status of the students or any adjustments for population correlation. They also, the schools, they did research on the schools that were included in the study. Some of those schools didn't exist. Eighty of them were phantom schools. Some were closed, some were virtual, and some were vocational. So this is the study that the CDC is bringing us about masking? I'm confused on that. And in all European countries, and in European countries, they are not masking children. And I just think it's a lot of politics, and I don't think these masks are working the way we want them to work.
Okay, that, that was, my question was, what would be the harm of waiting the extra five days like we already told the community?
Well, how long, I mean, how long do we have to keep waiting?
Five more days.
Excuse me, the goalposts are constantly being changed, and that's the problem, and that's the point I'm trying to prove. I do hear about the other side of the community, but there's a difference. The other side of the community, from how I feel, is basing their thought on fear. And they're putting it in their kids, and they're very fearful of what's to come. It's been come yet, but they're fearful of what's to come. Where the people that I also speak to and feel for are the ones that just want to have their kids breathe freely, build up their immune system. Emily mentioned something about if we take masks off, everyone's going to get sick because our immune systems are all in the tank, and that is. I'm not a doctor, and I never said I was a doctor.
All right, turn, turn on, no, no, turn on.
But I have talked to doctors, and I've read studies, and I've researched. And I understand, and I feel sorry for the doctors. I know they probably feel a lot of PTSD because of what we're.
So, I'm sorry, but my, my original question, I was going to convert in answer to my original question.
There's a lot of deaths and dying, and I understand that, and I can see how the doctors feel this way, but the people that spoke are really heavily, heavily putting blame.
My, my question was, was the, again, it's pretty clear that as of the eleventh, that mask will be optional, for sure. Whether, whatever, whatever we, well, Mr. Dimick just said that he would vote for it. I know you're going to vote for it. I know Mr. Way out's going to vote for it. I know Mr. Ma is going to vote for it. Not, I don't know about him yet. I know Mr. Lisette has just said that he would vote for it for the eleventh, maybe tonight, I don't know. But I'm asking, we're, we told the community the eleventh. I, I, and I'm not trying to be nasty, I'm just asking, what is your reasoning behind not allowing those community members those five school days? Why does it have to be right now? Why can't we wait until we get back from the break and give it those five days?
Well, I think that's what's going to happen. I came here to say that I'm done moving the goalposts, and I would vote for it to be removed after school tomorrow to give all the kids, the parents I heard from that they're afraid their kids won't be able to go to a party, or like the mask is going to make a difference in the transmission rate, clock masks. Every teacher that I've spoken to on the masking has said the kids' masks are gross. They're not, that's not a healthy-looking mask. My own kids have pulled masks out of the car when we didn't have one, because they had to go into school. It's, this is just, this is theater to me, and that's how I feel.
So you said you'd be okay with the eleventh. Are you saying that that's your motion?
No, I said my motion is tomorrow after school.
Right, but I, I thought you just said that, I thought, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought you said that what Mr. Dimick and Mr. Lisette proposed about the eleventh and not moving the goalposts is what you came here tonight to do, okay?
What's, what's your point?
So you're saying after, your motion was for after school tomorrow, but then in your speaking just now, you said you would be fine with taking it away on the eleventh.
No, I didn't say I'd be fine with that. I said I didn't think I would get my vote tonight, the one I wanted.
So you don't think it will currently pass?
No, I don't.
Okay. I, I would say that I think, I think with Kyle's vote count, I mean, that is yet to be seen, but I would agree. I would say that the ball is in your court. The power is obviously in your hands. You were able to call this meeting by a majority. You have a, you had a vote to amend the agenda, to change things tonight by a majority, and think you have five votes. The ball is in your court. You are completely in a seat of power here. All, all of you are.
So let's vote.
No, yeah, but, but we can, we'll vote, but I have a question first. I was asking for you to clarify your motion because I was confused. And the other question I have.
We clarified it.
If we have mask optional as is going to pass, and if cases go up, are you amenable to putting something in place that reinstates universal masking without a board meeting? So mask optional is going to pass. Will, are you agreeable to saying that, yes, mask optional will be, will be the standard? But if cases go up to a certain threshold, then we will put masks back in place without a board meeting? Are you amenable to that suggestion? Does that qualify as a new idea?
No.
No, you're not? So if cases go up, okay. That was my only question. And clarification that the motion was indeed after school tomorrow, not the eleventh. Thanks for, I appreciate you answering that.
So a clarification, it was not a majority of the board that called a special meeting. Three people, three board members can ask, and a special meeting is put in place. Two, two, okay, so two. And I guess a question to Nicole would be, would you be willing to amend the motion so that the mask optional goes in place January eleventh? And that way, I think, again, we're not moving the goalposts for parents who have wrapped their mind that that's where they were going to be, gives them time to get their kids vaccinated with their second dose if they have not done so already. And Jeff could support that. And it gives teachers time to get whatever communication that they need to get wrapped up to work in the classroom, gives them time to do so.
That's the current health and safety plan. I mean, that's, that's why.
I know, but it, it clearly says that on the eleventh, because we don't have that in place now. It clearly says on the eleventh, we're going mask optional.
That's what it says currently.
Well, it could be extended, though, too.
It can always, well, it can be extended.
You know?
No, that, that's why it's currently there. And so, you know, that, that's, that's, yeah, I mean, that is my understanding of the current health and safety plan, what you just stated, so. So, you know, I don't, there's no need to take a vote to do, my understanding is that, I don't know why the, the meeting was called, partly I suspect for quarantine, I didn't call it. But, you know, part of it was to talk about quarantine, and part of it was to talk about masking. As it pertains to masking, as I've stated over and over again, I'm, I'm against changing the current health and safety plan as it pertains to masking. And I would consider on the, the Monday, the tenth, and I'm just thinking out loud, and I usually get in trouble when I do that, but there probably should potentially be a mechanism in there if you have close to school, closing a school building. You know, I suppose, how many, you know, I don't want to get too much into this, but, you know, something to work on would be if a school building is about to be closed based off of, you know, two sets of clusters or something like that, if you think a responsible response to that would be looking at masks, I mean, that would be sort of a limit for me, but, you know, I'm not opposed to common sense dire situation where that comes to play. And I'm of the opinion that there's probably bad stuff coming in January. But I'm of the opinion that it probably doesn't matter whether kids are masking or not. I suspect in places like Park, you know, I suspect in January, we will be looking at school districts that are masked, and we're looking, going to be looking at the school districts that actually said optional masking. And I suspect there's going to be a lot of cases in both of those types of districts. And, and the question then will be more, how do we keep schools open when we're stuck with Department of Health regulations that are going to potentially shut them down? And that is where I think, you know, as a responsible school board member, I would want to be, as everybody's heard me say, I'm a hundred percent behind trying to keep kids in school. I think, I am a guy that we've all come to, I think, that realization, and so I think that's important. So should we think about empowering the superintendent in an emergency situation to put a school back into masks? Is that a possibility? I, I would be willing to entertain that on the tenth. But as it pertains to this vote, currently, as it pertains to masks, on the eleventh, they become optional under our current health and safety plan. I don't think we should vote to disturb that. I don't think we need to debate it a whole lot longer here. I think maybe some of our time is better spent in quarantine. I would ask the call the question.
Second.
Please. Patience is a virtue, okay? Very quickly, before we come to a vote on this, you know, I, I appreciate and concur with much of what Mr. Dimick has said. This has been a difficult situation, and there are many different views, and I appreciate, and I've read, by the way, comments from the public and the community. And quite frankly, we're in a, part of the situation we've got now with this mask madness is that there is not proper targeted mitigation plans in place that are realistic. You know, we've had masking for 24 months or whatever it is, and part of the reason for that is it was not properly stopped in a dynamic way based on conditions. And that's problematic. You know, we've got to have some sort of control point or something that at least dictates a dynamic method to whether or not additional actions are taken. And they haven't been there. It's been non decisive. It's been not done in a proper way in my, my estimation. I think that this discussion, as somebody may think is, is not pertinent. I think it was very pertinent in the fact that we were discussing probably what's going to be happening at some point. As Mr. Dimick said, at the end of the day, there's got to be some sort of plan in place for the facts of mask optional at some point. There is no trigger point for this that I think is realistic. So, you know, at the same time, we have, as, as he said, we have people that potentially in the community are counting on, you know, the date of January 11th, that was put in by the previous board, which is still a continuous board for the school district. It already happened not weeks ago. And people count on some level of consistency. And I think that's important. One of the problems that we have in an organization like this is to have consistency and to have a methodology. Look at root causes, understand trends, local to our districts, so that we can make proper decisions. So I would propose that we vote. And if it doesn't pass, then we should probably start considering the actions that need to be taken in order to have a proper mask optional policy and trigger points so that we can finally have something running to a point that is not perpetual masking based on what has been happening. So that's what I have to say. I appreciate everybody's time, the administration, the board, and superintendent, and the public for their, their patience and their frustrations. You know, we need to get through this, we need to work together. We've got to come up with some plans that are realistic and move forward and stop getting stuck in the mud. That's what I have to say.
I do have to make a technical one regarding contact tracing. And that is, to the extent that mitigation efforts receive, particularly with that of the mask, contact tracing becomes extremely more difficult and far less relevant. And so if the board moves forward with a, to remove the masking mandate, there should be anticipation that our efforts and ability to do meaningful contact tracing would be substantially diminished, likely to the point where we will identify and close positive cases, but we were not able to move forward with actual contact tracing because it would be so hard to manage. Secondly, if, if we do approve masking, mitigation of the mask, and we're going to issue the mask optional, we really must approve some modification of quarantine, lest we have all of our students out. So those are the two, two thoughts that I think are very important to consider this issue. I think we got time to get to it.
Have we read it? Have we read it?
Mr. Dimick?
No.
Kyle Wanger?
No.
Emily Damon?
No.
Paul Pink?
Yes.
William Lisette?
No, simply because I think we need to do January 11th.
I concur with Bill I said, no. The eleventh was some additional work.
Yes, because I believe the goalpost is going to continuously move. It has moved historically, and I don't see that pattern changing unless we pull it up. So.
Are you listening?
No.
Yes.
Moving on. Let's talk about, it's getting very big.
Welcome to the board, President.
We need to talk about this as a board, and try to process and make some changes and revisions to process. Okay. We're supposed to now talk about the quarantine requirements. I'm wondering, Chris, if you have a very simple topic or a motion that could make or help us move the changes to keep kids in school who are healthy.
Yeah.
Without, since we seem to have some consensus around this already, can we put a word for that?
Sure, I think I, I made the motion.
Okay.
We will have an email to us, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we have that. But it should be red.
Individuals identified as close contacts of positive case of COVID-19 will enter into modified quarantine. The student or staff member may extend school and participate in activities, but must wear a mask at all times except for eating or drinking for seven days from exposure. Individuals in modified quarantine must maintain a distance of at least six feet away from others while eating or drinking. Individuals in modified quarantine must continually monitor their symptoms and remain home if COVID symptoms occur and report this information to administration. Modified quarantine may not apply to all contacts of positive cases of COVID-19 and may apply only to those who experience a low-level exposure. High-level exposure cases, such as exposure within a household with the inability to isolate from a positive family member, or those who have ongoing exposures, may be required to participate in traditional quarantine in accordance with CDC and Department of Health guidelines. Determination of low-level or high-level exposures will be based on case-by-case investigations of exposure. Modified quarantine may be suspended in facilities that are experiencing multiple clusters of disease resulting from suspected school-based transmission.
Can I?
Can I just, because of the way the last vote went, it might make sense if this were effective also on January 11th, because the entire first half of it about masking is now sort of mooted, right? People only can't handle.
No, no, I, I would, I would want this effective immediately. Because, you know, I think for them, when we get used to it, I think, well, like, we will have, we are having close contacts currently. So maybe there are students and parents that emailed us whose, whose child is identified as a close contact, hold out of school. And this is the reason to do this, keep that child in school learning. Yet we know is that the overwhelming majority will not test positive, and therefore are not affected. And yes, everyone will be wearing a mask now, so it's great.
So when it comes to January 11th?
Well, here's the issue, is that this particular quarantine.
We have to go procedure, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, let's have our discussion.
This, this particular quarantine change is going to require work. People are going to need to, they're, they're going to need to figure out where in the cafeteria they're going to put these kids. They're going to need to figure out where in the classroom they can isolate a desk or two so that those kids are six feet apart from the other. There are things that are going to need to be done to enact this. And tomorrow starts Christmas break, and if you give them the first week back to school, you actually give them time to implement it so that they're not now asking our overworked, overtaxed staff to work over the holiday to put this into effect on day one when they come back. The, the six feet is only when their mask is off. So he's very clear in the language that they, they only need to be six feet away from someone when their mask is off. So it really won't change anything but potentially lunch. And I would expect that would probably be one of the easiest things to change.
So, I, I agree that we need to figure out a better way for asymptomatic close contact. I agree that the quarantine is something that we should change. I, one, one caveat is, you, you know, in order to have a student come to school who's an asymptomatic close contact according to this proposal, they would have to be masked, except when eating, drinking, you know, that thing. How are we going to enforce that after January the 11th? I think is something we're going to need to figure out, maybe not today, you know, we figured it out on, on the 10th. But, because then it's going to be more difficult to know, which, because right now it's easy, right? Because everybody's supposed to be masked. But when you take that away, then it's going to be harder to tell. And figuring out who's going to enforce it, because I, you know, obviously, teachers are having a hard enough time trying to get students to wear their masks properly, it's not working so well. So that is a, a real concern. The second is, I would be in support of such a move. However, I do believe the test-to-stay strategy, since it has been endorsed by the CDC, and it is in practice in another county, and we've had an offer from a parent whose husband has been a part of it, which I think would be great for us to utilize as an experience, and we can do it right. I think that makes sense, because, you know, they're going to, obviously, the parent would have to consent to it, right? You know, to test things.
You talk about test-to-stay? Yeah, I don't, I don't, I certainly do not support test-to-stay.
Why not?
So I would, yeah, I, it's a great question that you have, Dr. Serene, and I think that, you know, is a question for Dr. Meehan. And just to let the community know, to let, to let you know, that a lot of this wording is directly from a policy that, that he had introduced back in May as part of our institution. So I don't know if you can comment.
But before he asks comments, I'm asking why you don't support test-to-stay?
So, one, I, I think.
Because I think you'll give parents better confidence knowing.
Is test-to-stay an option right now? Okay, I think, we take that off. I, I recommend we can talk about the motion.
Well, it, it impacts the motion, it's a modification that I'm suggesting.
Oh, you're suggesting modification, I didn't realize that.
Okay. Because, you know, I think that if you allow.
But it's just not available, how can we modify something that's on the table?
Maybe, I mean, I support, I, I think I support it as well, Dr. Serene, but I do think for the sake of sort of moving the meeting along, I would add it, I mean, like, can we discuss it separate from, I mean, this has been offered by Dr. Wayack as the language. I think if we try to add language, it usually isn't how it works. So I, I, I'm with you, I, I think I support it as far as what I know about it. And I think it's something we should discuss at this meeting, because I think it'd be something that.
To be fair, though, I was told at the beginning that it couldn't, shouldn't be added as a separate agenda item because that through discussion, we could potentially modify the proposal that was already on the agenda. That's, I.
There are two ways procedures will handle this. In this case, the movement is not agreeing to a primary amendment. And that's the easy title to honor first. You can make a motion to amend, if you treat it like any other motion.
Okay, then I would have to make a motion to amend. That's second.
If I could just speak briefly, I might just speak very briefly on that question. That is actually correct. The, the language, and I, I have a history, I've worked in places, so it's not a secret, that I, I do very strong support of on March 1st, last spring, because of the very reasons we spoke about, we were quarantined far more than we ever should have. We thought that was why it wasn't spreading, but actually, in fact, it was just an artifact. And so I get that, that was before Omicron. That said, modified quarantine, my, we are still sending lots of kids home for very, for no reason at all. The issue with test-to-stay, I, I think test-to-stay could be complementary to and supportive of modified quarantine. However, it is only available for districts that have a mask mandate. So from now until January 11th, certainly, from a long-term point of view, we have to make commitments. It is free, but if there's staffing and things, and I, I did not pursue it thinking that, at least on the 11th and perhaps before, we would not be under a mask mandate, and therefore we should not move forward with March 11th.
Couple of questions about that.
I'm sorry, test-to-stay.
So the state is telling us that only the school districts that have a mask mandate can have test-to-stay.
Yes, sir.
And is that because they're saying it because it's funded by them?
It is funded by them.
So are you talking about the funding of it is only available? Or are you saying, I mean, I'm surprised, if we're allowed to have our own quarantine. I'm still a little blown away by the idea that we can change our own quarantine vote, but if it's broad to that, why would we not be able to say we have test-to-stay?
It's the, it's the funding, we're not getting it.
And the staffing.
So.
The company funding that stuff.
Yeah, so if you have rapid, so the president's mentioned rapid test, well, if, if parents had rapid test, would they be willing to pay that, have people that have no money, better advantage to be there? Don't. But having said that, if you have somehow access to rapid test for one or whatever, and we allow for test-to-stay on a private level, or however you can pull it off, so to speak, if someone, could someone utilize under our own program, if they have the ability to test for four straight days, with, with, separate from the funding issue, could we still implement it and tell essentially our own community, look? and tell essentially our own community, look, if you have the ability to utilize a test-to-state regiment that is adequate for our purposes, you make decisions on whether or not your child is able to remain in school or come back to school?
And the issue would be, uh, that once we have masks optional, our ability to do contact tracing is severely diminished. Or, or require so much effort and track it, because right now definitively by wearing a mask, you're not going to be quarantined. But once the masks are gone, then you become a close contact. And the effort that will have to be expended to go through a cafeteria and find how many people at this table, this one had a mask, this one didn't, they're within six feet, they're on here, but it, uh, it becomes an unmanageable thing. So once, once the board makes the decision to go no masking, really what they're making the decision is that COVID becomes endemic at that point, in my estimation. And COVID then is treated like a communicable disease, a traditional communicable disease rather than a pandemic. So that's the implication that the board is saying, no.
But people could still potentially learn that their child has a contact outside even the school setting. I mean, and somebody could be sick in their own home or for any other reason. So even if the school can't communicate to a family, uh, a contact, and maybe a number of different reasons why the family itself is aware that the child has been exposed or is concerned about it. If they had the ability then to administer a test-to-state regimen, maybe I'll tell you that incorrectly, but perhaps that would give them, again, additional, just one additional tool to, uh, potentially permit them to come back into a, like Murren said. And, and, and all I'm saying is perhaps the district would authorize that possibility under its health and safety requirement, that would be communicated to...
I don't think they would be quarantined in the first place anymore.
Yeah, I think what...
That's what I'm just trying to learn. I may not be accurate, so, so just saying.
If we maintain the mask mandate, uh, and keep test-to-stay, they would work well together because we can still do very comprehensive, adoptable contact tracing efforts that are underway. And then to the extent that we identify close contacts, then we would be masked, but then also they could test as an additional layer of mitigation to make sure that we don't have asymptomatic students in schools. But once the masks become optional, then our ability to contact trace diminishes very substantially and the relevance of it is, is less uh, because people aren't wearing masks and all that. We don't know, the numbers will be high. So I, I, I think in essence, we will not be able to identify close contacts once there is no masking mandate. Because if we have an asymptomatic person in this, or asymptomatic persons emerging, for us to be able to identify all of the people who are close contacts, the numbers will be just too high because now we're protected by having a mask. That just eliminates you from close contact status. Once those masks are gone, it just, it's a constant rule that will not allow us to be able to meaningfully quarantine people.
Yeah, by making this happen, it is essentially just saying that, like, we're calling it a modified quarantine. Quarantine doesn't exist anymore. Because they can't do a contact tracing. Without the mask, they can't do the contact tracing, so therefore there is no quar- quarantine is gone. So as of January 11, it's an only the strong survive type of situation.
So I just, one question I would ask then is, so could we try, obviously, once the masks go away, we're going to be in, we, we won't be able to identify close contacts, as you're mentioning. So could we try something like the pool testing that was already offered to us, which is covered, to say a, a class, you know, you like that way you could alert someone of, okay, in your classroom, there's a few positives, or it helps us inform and make a decision. Okay, we're getting a few cases, like you were saying, that even be able to, as responsible board members, um, act upon what's happening in their school system. We can't track close contacts anymore. But if we know that we're starting to get a number of cases in a classroom because of something like pool testing perhaps, which people will have to obviously consent to and be forced, but would we then be able to act at least on that and say, okay, we're starting to get some clusters? Maybe we should put on the brakes or do some kind of temporary mitigation, which is what they're doing at Central Bucks and other school districts too, is if we see a rise in cases, they act.
How, how do they identify them in, in the other districts? Through your points, if COVID is any way now?
They're actually testing them, but...
How are they testing them? Through the poll? Through the thing that was suggested to us months ago? Or?
They're using the, they're, they're doing, um, the three-day symptom free, but they're just testing people that are symptomatic or, you know, close contacts with a household, right? So the ones that are higher risk, up to my knowledge.
I know that Central Bucks, I'm not buying anything for that before, it's a ten, for you.
It's two days. I looked on their website. It was, it's what they do is they keep people at home for three days, uh, from their last reported symptom or positive test regardless. So that's symptomatic, asymptomatic.
Isolation changes in the isolation policy versus...
Right, right.
Very different.
No, I know, I know. I was just saying what I do know about Central Bucks. I know that they're, right? I'm just, um...
So, and, and I'll, I'll get...
And then asymptomatic, they, they don't quarantine.
Yeah, we, we will still isolate.
Right, isolation was so...
Isolation will continue because we can identify isolation. Uh, when, when we have positive cases reported to us. To be expected to report it, that's always been an issue, but I think in large part, we, we know when, when we start our shit, you know? So isolation will not change. But quarantine, I would be very hard pressed to, to really be able to say, particularly when incident rates are going to be high. And we don't know how high because of our current coming, but we can anticipate increases in incident rates in our, in our buildings. And so, and among our staff. And so in those circumstances, we will have a very hard time identifying individuals to actually quarantine because so many would be possible. And then we would be in, it just, it's from a management point of view, from a great group that worked very hard to do this, it's not a fact of claim who knows wearing mask. Definitively, it is the mask that prevents you from being a close contact, in regards.
Just to be the procedural method, based on what the superintendent has now said, are you inclined to maintain the motion to amend it or are you going to withdraw it?
Could I ask a question first? It was a pertinent, I, maybe I missed this. Is pool testing funded in mask optional schools? Test-to-stay, but is pool...
Pool testing really is another topic in its entirety. And it is a complex issue that has privacy issues attached to it.
Okay.
Many, many discussions that have gone on, but it's been a, I think that's one of the worst future considerations, but I don't think it's going to be a full change toward tonight.
Thanks.
So we can, we can call the motion to amend it or...
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your conversation. Is that a motion, is that... Your, your choice is to either remove your motion to amend because you're the originator or we can vote to amend. I think at this point it makes more sense to table it until January or April time. So we're sending it? Yeah. And we know what happens with masks. You, are you making a motion to table or are you rescinding your... I'm rescinding the motion. Could I ask, Dr. Mahin, could I ask a question or two about, on this motion, just one phrase, it's in it, it says, uh, case-by-case investigation of exposure. I want to, you know, uh, to, uh... How would you, I'm just asking, how would you conduct a case-by-case investigation of exposure to determine whether or not high-level or low-level exposures? I'm asking a question based on the last sentence, too. Determination low-level or high-level exposure will be based on a case-by-case investigation of exposure. Is that something that you, is that enough direction that you can...
We know, I mean, we're not flawless.
Right, right, but do you have enough direction in that phrase?
But, but we, oh, yeah.
Okay.
We know, we have, we have two siblings who have COVID. We would determine that to be a high incident or high risk.
Okay.
It's, uh, the direction. We do, we do, we are concerned about COVID in same household.
Yes.
So I'm glad that that's, that's being considered.
Okay.
And we would be able to all for it.
And would you be able to, hit another phrase here, just from a administrative direction, when it says continually monitor their symptoms? Individuals in modified quarantine must continually monitor their symptoms and remain home if symptoms occur? Is that something that you...
Sure, that's something that every kid should be doing every day.
Right, okay, good. So we, we use the same kind of a check...
I think even more so if we hope some of the modified quarantine nurses, I mean, so good about this, uh, they'll check in and...
And then I, the only other question I have is, do you, do you perceive that it is possible to identify the kids who need to mask all day? Is that, is there an issue you see with the sentence that covers the fact that must wear a mask at all times except from eating or drinking? Is that something that you feel you have a direction in, in the...
Well, would the alternative be going home?
Right.
I think that's a far preferable. I mean, I...
Okay, good. So you don't see, okay, great. That was, I just wanted to give you a chance to weigh in on something that we...
Yeah, no, I, again, putting aside the uncertainty that it, it, it would be on a card.
Correct, yeah.
I am otherwise, and that's, I'm, I'm otherwise comfortable with on a card.
Will there be, in, like, would, so, uh, say a kid is a, has to wear a mask in the building. Uh, A, I have a hard time wondering how that's going to be released, but so would, uh, you'd be sending out a letter every day or an email to all the teachers every day? These kids need to be masked? And is that any kind of privacy issue that we're sending out an email every day to all the staff saying all these kids have to be masked? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's something we can admit. And again, precise work is something that would be done on, in a way that is discreet. Yeah, and, and in the end, if someone says, look, I want to go home, I can go home. And ultimately, this is about, we're talking about a week now. Because if the masks go away, it's going to be very hard for you to persist with modified quarantine.
Well, I think that's what we're kind of getting at. I, I'm worried about how, I mean, I think right now we'll be okay, because everybody's supposed to be masked. But I'm wondering how you will, I mean, and that's up to you, of course, to work with.
Yeah, modified quarantine is not going to work well when everyone, with, with masks become optional. And, 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 and that's a conscious decision the board would make, recognizing that, that mask optional is, is a very significant move toward communicable disease rather than pandemic. And, and I think at one point I made a shared policy that the board may be asked to consider to address the reality of a mask optional environment in, in our buildings.
I, I, sorry, because I do have a question and I just lost it for a second there. I, I guess my statement is that I, I would be amenable. I would be a board member who could support and vote yes to a modified quarantine if we had a different masking situation and it is able to be administered. But what I'm hearing is this modified quarantine is in effect for maybe five days, because those five days are the only days people have mandated masking. So I cannot support this as it is. Uh, I could support it if there was masking in place and/or if there was testing in place, but what I'm hearing is testing is not possible without mandated masking. That is the reason why I can't, I won't be supporting this. I would, I would say that if we can, if we could table this or reconsider this so that the administration has time to come to the next board meeting with all of those different potential options, I think that we could have, uh, we could come to a lot more consensus on this modified quarantine. But as it stands, it sounds like we're just, I mean, there's no need for all these sentences. We could just say quarantine ends on the 11th, is what I'm, in effect, hearing. Is that, I mean...
I, I think certainly that was not my intention for quarantine, for modified quarantine to end. I think actually we'll, we'll continue to play a role.
But how do you...
Without masking, without, without, yeah. Without masking, please let me talk. Without masking, um, yes, more kids may be considered close contacts, but not if they're vaccinated. And, you know, not if they were not within fifteen, not within six feet for fifteen continuous minutes. So I, I, I do want to send the community the proper message that, you know, modified quarantine can still play a role without masks. And that's the idea, is that those are the students who may be, or those are the individuals who may be at risk. So they're the ones who mask, and that's what I think masking plays a very small role in, in central sources.
But definitely.
But I understand, I understand that it does become harder. But I'll be honest with you, I mean, you heard a parent say her student was identified six days later than being a close contact. I think it's challenging now, anyway.
Yeah, we do.
I mean, I think, you know, I also want to, want to be clear that, I mean, our mitigation strategies are, are flawed. I mean, we, we, you know, we don't, we don't, we're not keeping kids in pods. We're not, you know, making sure that they are always, you know, as far apart as possible. So, so we kind of have a terrible word, like a hybrid, this hybrid mitigation process going on now. And I think that that's a move to eventually look at this virus as an endemic virus, which many other districts just south of us have already gone and are doing. So I mean, we're, we're really far behind, honestly, in, in moving forward in this. And so I think this is, this is a way to keep kids in school. You know, and that's certainly what I promise, is to keep kids in school. So, you know, that's why I brought, brought up this motion and would like to see us at least move them in some kind of forward direction.
So, um, I do also want to keep kids in school, but I, I do think that Dr. Mahin made a very important point, that once you take away masks, it becomes, your definition of close contacts has become altered. Right? So the identification of close contacts is going to change. And your ability to truly quarantine real close contacts on a, I guess, more global scale is going to go away. Right? Like you, you tied our hands. So that's the reality, right? Like, call it what it is. I mean, I, I think it sounds great to say that we're gonna keep kids in school and modify the quarantine and still keep those kids masked, but the reality is it really won't happen because, not because anybody is doing it intentionally, but that's just, that's just reality, right? So, um, there's, there's that. And when it comes to the other mitigation measures, that's what, I mean, there was something else that's getting late. Um, mitigation measures such as pods, we, we did talk about that. It was impossible to do, um, in secondary education because of the nature of what classes offered. It was done to the point that, right?
Because you're, you're absolutely right. And I don't, I don't think it's reality. It's certainly not reality, you know, in, in the community. I mean, we want to get back to pre-pandemic education. And I think that's, I know the direction we're on, I doubt it's a board. I hope, I hope that's the direction we're on.
So what I'm hearing is isolation will still be possible because individuals will still be able to be identified by the school district for isolation. But I'm hearing that, I, individuals without mandatory masking will not be able to be identified by the school district. Or, I mean, it will be impossible to...
This would become so much more difficult.
So much more difficult.
It's a tactical matter that may be... We'll certainly talk through, we have, again, we've talked about this quite a bit as an administrative team. But the reality is that if the mask, because both individuals have to be masked in order to avoid the need to quarantine. And so if we have an asymptomatic person masked or not, the other person doesn't have a mask, so it takes the two. And that's true in the hall, in the bus, in the locker room, and again, on the bus, they should be wearing masks, right? So that's the, there's a brainy dynamic. And we are already tasked significantly in doing the close contact, in the contact tracing under current circumstances. And so to expand it, which I think substantially puts a strain that may be just unfair to our nurses and, and our staff. We'll do the best we can. If we see circumstances that require intervention, we hope to have the possibility to kind of weigh in and help there. But I, I think it would be unrealistic for me to sit here and say, we're going to expect modified quarantine, optional masking, and meaningful, uh, results in quarantining close contacts.
And thank you for that.
And that's just the terms of it, and which leads us toward communicable disease, mitigation and control. Unlike what we've been doing for the last two years almost.
What, what I hear from this is that as of January 11, we will no longer be taking COVID seriously and it will become a brief-for-all illnesses in school. That's what I'm hearing.
And I, that is not what I'm saying, but that, that may be, and that could be the view of it, but that is not what I'm saying.
But since it will become possibly probable, probably impractical, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it might become very much impractical to... in your mouth, but it might become very much impractical to conduct, for the school to conduct contact trace tracing at that point. Chris Wack said that this could still be used in other circumstances, but those circumstances would likely, from a practical standpoint, be when parents identify that their family member has been exposed as a close contact, in which the school doesn't need a policy, those parents can make the decision and the choice for themselves to quarantine or not quarantine or observe testing. I mean, I don't really see the need for this.
I think what we're, what we're encouraging the community is that, is that that child, we want that child to be in school.
Right, but Dr. May, what are you going to?
That's the important thing, is the communication, and we want, we want children to be in school.
Yes, but the parents, it, it actually defers the parental decision back, I mean, even more so. This, this policy, if it really isn't necessary, if we're going to that point, it truly is parental choice. Parents in the community become aware, because the school is not, for all intents and purposes and a practical standpoint, going to be able to identify those children, but their parents still can. And so that is the ultimate, you know, as it were, a freedom of choice of parental decision of what is right. Those parents still have the ability to conduct their own modified quarantine. My point is, there does not need to be a school policy, because from a practical standpoint, it will not be able to be implemented.
Maybe in the future it does, depending on what happens, I don't know. 10 months from now, 24 months from now, who knows? You know, you've got a policy that becomes dormant or not acted upon after, you know, a period of time, but you have it thawed out, and then you can bring it back to life if there is ever any issue in the future.
I would suggest, I agree with you. I would suggest then that we don't enact it and, and.
But the point of enacting would be to have a policy that went through the board and has the wording figured out and has everybody on board with it, so that the next time you dust it off, there it is. And we don't have three-hour discussions on a modified quarantine.
Or the next time we go to masking.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Right, the next time or whatever, if, if that ever happened, but at least there's policy there.
Well, yeah, because on the 10th, if you looked at, there may not be support for this, but if you add triggers to go to masking, like, in a building, then having this available would, would be relevant in that situation.
And so there is a lot of, what I will tell you is, we do have some triggers that could be imposed upon us from Department of Health, and that would be 25 case threshold at Hopewell, and they've developed, and 45 plus cases at our larger schools, the high school. So when these come along, we have triggers.
Triggers for what, closing?
Mows, right? That's horrible, right? And, and so my point is that.
And we don't have the ability to modify that.
Let's use the time to think about this between now and the 10th. And allow us to think about this between now and the 10th. Because, I mean, I will, I will say, masking is of value. How much value is very much open to debate. Masking has costs, an extent to which it's certainly open for discussion as well. And we look to see between now and the 10th, right? We may say, "Look, we have to ultimately get 10 down," right? We have to get off this pandemic thing. But maybe between now and the 10th, we will be wanting 5% more mitigation to keep the doors open, if possible. Mrs. Gariello told me that we have 12 teachers right now at the high school who are out with COVID or COVID-related symptoms and one substitute. When our, when our, when our families are correctly saying our kids are in the, you know, study halls for too long, they're right. But the alternative is, and we're going to try to get them ourselves. Mr. Pritchard is going to work on that. I'm rough with Mr. Pritchard. But the alternative is to close the building, right? That's the alternative, not to, like, fix this problem. The alternative is to close the building. And so we're, I need the community, we're on the edge here. We are on the bitter edge, and we're, we're facing a challenge that is unknown to us as a community, as a world, really. And so I, I am grateful for these extra days for us to be thinking about this. And I'm not saying we have a good solution, but yes, we need to have triggers beyond this when the building closes, because that's the catastrophe of this whole thing. And we're going to resist closing buildings until we're told we mustn't halt. But these, we're on the edge right here. We're truly on the edge.
I have a quick question, and it's just that, and I think you know it, maybe you don't. If we were not masked now, would we be shut down right now?
No.
How close are we?
Well, right now, I'll give you, thanks to the data that was collected, the change, I'll, I'll give you the, how many cases we're building on the 16th of December and how many today?
Does that include the rolling count?
No, this is just today, that we're calling a single snapshot. That would be, we have five on the 16th delivery bell, seven today. 13 in Hopewell on the 16th, 17 today. 17 at the I S, 20 today. 18 at the middle school, 20 today. 15 at the high school, up to 22 today. So we are still okay. We're not hitting those limits, but we don't know what happens when people return in January in this environment. But we're watching.
And the masking has no impact on the state closing it. That's just based on the number of cases and that. So, yeah, I, I agree with you, Dr. May, and I would, I think we should be taking the time, it's my belief, I suspect, I'm the only one here, our doctors left, but there's other doctors still on the board. Yeah, no, it's, I mean, I have every expectation that things will be horses during party. And so, and it's my view somewhat, regardless of who's masked and not masked, that's just, but I think we should be planning for the reality that, you know, like you just, I say, and look at the numbers and what's happening now, right? And is there a belief that it could probably be two, three magnitudes of?
And that's, that's just it, that's just it. We've had administrators who've been very ill home, and, and that's a hole. Our teachers, our kids, of course, but to operate the system, we need people, right? Adults to run the place, when everyone knows that we're low, the subs are not existing. And again, I sound like I'm repeating myself, but let me say, but any little mitigation effort could be of value to keep the doors open, because we could be, and I don't know what's happening with our, but we could be perilously close to problems as we return from the break. And that's where we need to be continually discussing what it is we're doing in the context of the environment that we're in, which is as uncertain as it has been since March 2019.
And the delivery bell would have closed, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the delivery bell triggered that closure at the state level, except the state said, "If you are willing to increase your mitigation and space those kids out more," and they worked and they saw, and they said, "Well, we'll continue to work with you." Is that correct?
We will, we will advocate, anyone who comes knocking on our door to remind us to go away.
Right, right, and I believe that was successful at certain points.
That's it, that's it. There, there, there will be discussions, and they will ask, and that's when we provide feedback, because, but we have to keep the doors open.
Right.
And we will go all in to keep the doors open. And, and if it means, if someone said a scuba suit, or if it means a scuba suit, I will be there advocating for it, because we have to keep our doors open.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I just think that that's probably going to be our reality in January. And you've heard a desire, I think, by at least, you know, I mean, quite frankly, every, a large number of the, of the board thinks that a mandated mask has to, at some point, cease. And right now, we're looking to change right then. So what I would hope, and it sounds like you're suggesting this, and I would, you know, advocate that you also utilize those districts that are already in that posture and inquire, I mean, some smart folks in Bucks County and smart administrators down there that are already in that posture, that are going to be dealing with the exact same issues. What, what, to your point, what are they doing triggers other thoughts about, under that scenario, what, what can we be doing to react quickly to an emergence of a problem? And, and, and so especially with two weeks, I mean, look what two weeks between meetings does, right? And look at the numbers you were just talking about there. I mean, as you earlier said earlier, you know, I do think we need to look at the power of you or, or a team, and I know that's, I'm not trying to make you be the guy to make the call, but the reality is, things are probably going to move quickly, and we probably need to have policies in place that allow for quick decisions by people that don't involve the working.
And, and like, I, I have the authority to close a school tomorrow, right? That's, that's the most invasive thing that can be done, and I can do it. And so many schools, I want us to be there, because the question I ask is, if we have vaccines in place and therapeutics in place, when does it end, if not now? When does it ever, it has to end, it has to, however, right? There are emerging unpredicted crises that come up. And just as they would with a, a mumps or a measles outbreak, or whatever it happens to be, right? We have to be responsive to those things. And, and I'm saying right now, we are in the crisis mode. And so we have to be ready to go all in on mitigation, even if it's not where we want to be. We have to be ready to go all in on mitigation, because the alternative is a very real risk of closing our doors. And that we just cannot have. And, and, and right now is different than what will be in the spring or different from November. Right now is different. And I would be all in, get rid of the mask, go to communicable, if we weren't where we are at this minute. And where we are at this minute is perilous and unknown. That's my pitch for this board.
And in that pitch, how would you ask us to proceed on this modified?
Whatever you want. Really.
I mean, I can put it in place, like, during a good sense.
How do you put it in a good sense?
Because if you do go back to masking.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm going to be here.
It's a structure that we don't have to revisit, it's done.
I, I like the structure of it. If, if things go as we hope, and we get rid of the masks next week, or when we get back, everything's fine, we have it, COVID's, but we have the structure in place, and maybe we can take that, but we must, because we need that 5%, that tiny increment, to keep getting as soon as our numbers are so close, and we use this not to send too many kids home, and we don't want this.
And we can use it in support of extension of infectious disease policy in the future as well.
And so I, I, I think it's good to have a line, and, and sure, we could practice with it next week, but I mean that sincerely, right? We could just see that entire output as well.
Exactly. And then. And you get it going, you test it out, even though it's a short period of time. And the point is, this board has to have things in place so we can be proactive instead of reactive and dithering. It's going to happen, and I think this is an important part of it.
Now, Mike, did you, wait, wait, did you say though that you wanted the opportunity to talk to your administration about this?
This is fine, we've been talking a long time about this, right? This is not new to anybody at the table over there. We need to work, I mean, it won't be perfect on the first day. Our administrators, and I thank them for being here at this late hour, knowing they have to get up early tomorrow to, to run our place. When we implement modified quarantine, the worst day will be the first day, and the second day will be better, and the third day will be better, and the first week will be fantastic, because of the people we have working. They'll solve the problem, of course, they will. But having that experience and running it may not be a bad thing, because it just may be that I'll be standing here, "Please, we need that 5% extra on the 10th of January." And I would not bring that too lightly, but you would see why. And then we would have that in place in addition to whatever it is we had to do that. So, you know, that's the, that's the thought that I have.
Call the question?
Yep.
Jeffrey, you ready?
Aye.
Michael, you ready?
Aye.
Emily, you ready?
Yes, because we have a meeting before we will be unmasked to potentially, because we need to modify this, so I'm the yes.
Nicole, you ready? William, you ready?
Yes.
Ethan, you ready?
Aye.
Mary, you ready?
Yes.
Bruce, you ready?
Yes.
Christopher, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, we have one other order of business. Let's see if we go to post visitor comments, post meeting comments to visitors. Oh, I'm sorry, let's see if we can do this relatively quick. I'm sorry. We'd like you to consider motion to authorize administration to archive board meeting video for public viewing on the district website.
So moved. Second.
All in.
Well, that's for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. And for the sake of the secretary, that was Damon and Seri.
Discussion.
What's, is there any period of time associated with that?
We, we can archive tonight.
No, no, how long, are they going to be archived for eternity or?
They're going to be archived for eternity, but the proposal was to put it on the website for a rolling 12 months. So come on, because it would just be very cluttered.
We're, okay.
A rolling 12-month period, but we could retain, we could retain that.
Wait a minute, is that in the motion? I, I'm sorry, I just can't find it.
Yeah, that's the motion.
I can't, I can't.
We want that out of the motion, I think, and then we can finish.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I know it's late, but, you know, I, I think there's work, some thought about how long the record is retained for.
It's a video record.
And once it's not available on the website, how would someone access it?
Right, I know, what? And there are other.
But if we.
And another question.
But if we kept it on the website, we could avoid the cost and the extra work of fulfilling right to no requests. I mean, I, I like this the way it is, it does not include a date, it just says permission to.
Yeah, you're, you're going to get into this either a cloud-sized limit or a server-sized limit, so you need to put some limit on it, or you're going to have to keep buying more space.
And you should, maybe we could do this, and we won't put that limit if we take it up a bit?
Yeah, I like that, I just roll, let's roll that.
Pretty tragic, right there. Do you want, do you want to go home? Do you want to go home? Well, we can dismiss that. Yeah. Okay.
Can I, can I, all in favor? Aye. opposed?
It's about time it's done.
One more, one more.
Yeah, this is just a, a resident, a standard resignation of a professional employee, so we pressed the board to approve the resignation as, as described on the motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? Any questions? Stop. It's not like you can. It's not like we can. Okay. Do we have any votes to comment?
I don't think the sign-up sheet was out, but if anyone is out there who wants to comment? That's a good comment to end on.
Okay, with that, we are going to adjourn the meeting at 11:26. Going to get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.